Good morning.
Good morning. Hour being nine o'clock, we're going to call our regular session and commissioner meeting January 7th, 2025 to order. I could ask McBone if he would be there to give us some careful.
Father, as we bow our hearts before you, as we begin this new year, Lord, here in Weston County, we thank you for these who have been selected by their constituents to serve this county. Lord, we ask that you would give them wisdom, guidance, as they go through not only the agenda of the day, but throughout the year. Lord, we know that we need your help in continuing to make our county great. Lord, we thank you that you would help them, Lord God, to always be thinking of those that they serve. In Jesus' name.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have any additions or changes to the agenda?
Um, Jim with Rowan Bridge needs reschedule for the January 2nd meetings, and Brandon will not be here until the 10:35 mark, he can't hold his status since.
So Rowan Bridge is Tim.
And Brandon's going to be pulled, so we reschedule.
Um, I'm not sure.
Okay. Any other additions or changes to the agenda?
Maybe because this has a resolution before the constitution. Could we wait to do the decision of rescinding it until we hear the constitutional districting issue at 9:50 and rescinding Resolution 24-10 at 10:05? If that's okay for the people that are here.
We don't have a cancellation at 10:30, so that should give us a little more time there, too. We will swap those two. Some other changes or additions to the agenda?
I'd like to pull the board on these, at least for the solid waste district, out, do that separate off the consent agenda. Fairly, I would probably that, but the business is on that board, we got that pulled out and that's separate.
Just the solid waste district?
Pulling must be kind of solid waste from consent agenda leaving fair one vacancy. Any other additions or changes?
I would also like to pull everything but, um, perhaps the minutes from the consent. The payroll will be decided later on, so it should be pulled anyway because you haven't done payroll without yet, but I would like to have everything off of the consent because I think that's very important that these discussions happen and not just have a motion to pass them. So I'd like to have every one of them off, and if it, um, who's the chair to put them at after vouchers are done.
Leaving the minutes?
Leaving the minute, but if somebody wants to discuss the minutes, I suppose that can be pulled, too.
If that's the chair. Any other additions or changes?
Marty, are you wanting to do the executive session minutes after as well? Is that what your thought process is?
The minutes? It would be up to the, if anybody needs to pull the minutes or the executive session minutes, I would assume that you guys have read them already?
I would like to see them before, regardless of what we do.
So, so pull them, too?
Yeah.
So Mr. Chair, if we could pull them, too.
We're just going to, we're going to pull the whole consent agenda.
Thank you.
Any other additions or changes to the agenda? You're going to change a motion?
I moved, uh, approved the agenda with you. Describe changes.
Second. Motion's been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the changes to the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Election of officers. We've got, do you have any nominations for the chair?
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Nate Todd for chair.
Any other nominations for chair?
No, from their nomination system.
Second. Motion's been made to cease nominations and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of nominations to cease, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. All those in favor of Commissioner Todd being our chair, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
You want, you want to do the vice chair for a chair?
I'd open nominations for vice chair. Any nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I vote that Ed Wagner, vice chair.
That's taken that. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in, are there any other nominations? For vice chair? Any motion to cease nominations? Motion's been made and seconded to cease nominations. Any discussion? All those in favor of ceasing nominations for vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All in favor of Commissioner Wagner being the vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
You want to move down here, Becky? You're going to make me move down there.
We're going to make your own chair.
Don't mind the others. Okay.
I do. My home.
Exactly. Yeah, not a problem. I warmed it up for you and everything. I tried to leave no germs. Yeah, it's fine. I don't like that chair, you know.
Yeah, it's getting close to the end.
Well, he's taller than me, so he can get present.
There we go. Did we move the minutes as well? So, is there any public comment? Is there any public comment?
Right here, Mr. Chair.
Would we be able to comment on the 25-resh resolution before you vote?
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, we're going to listen to Mr. Curley, I believe, here, and then dive into that.
We had on that, man, we had changed the times on that, so the discussion of constitutional district, district issues wanted to be moved before that.
Double checking.
We're 10 minutes past on the newspaper.
Mr. Chairman? Since we did move, um, everything to after the vouchers on the agenda, um, it's probably not appropriate to bring them back up, so I think we'll probably just settle it.
Take three to five minutes.
Excuse me.
Marty.
Thank you. Look, I can't.
Last night, can't be most than that.
The new store. This is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy, we have a bootlegger's liquor, the deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing, the coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's 30 people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their doughnuts. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
We've got two sealed bids. First is Newsletter Journal in my right hand. For my occasion, Kim, is that 15% discount, that's the 10:50? Okay. So, the Newsletter Journal has put in a bid, and they both look like they're following state statute, everything looks fine, I guess, in that, those regards, but, um, the Newsletter Journal is bidding a discounted rate of $10.50 per column inch, um, which would be a total cost of printing the seven minutes that was provided them at $945. And the Weston County Gazette proposes a bid of $6 per column inch with the same seven minutes provided to them as the Newsletter Journal, the total cost of $294 for that seven minutes. The Newsletter Journal has roughly 1500, 1600 average in distribution, and Gazette looks like about average of about 550. Any discussion?
It's over 600.
Is it? Okay.
For, if you read on there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you're right. Is there any discussion on the two sealed bids for the county newspaper, official newspaper?
I guess I'd like to ask both papers to give us a little detail of your, your websites, what, what you have to offer that way for us, and what your, what your, I don't know what it's called, the people, how many look at your website on average?
I'm not, this, this is not about how many people are looking at our website, this is for the publication of legal minutes in the newspaper. If you wanted to do that, we can work a proposal for other advertising on there, but this is just for that. And I don't have my numbers together for that because of that reason. This is just for publication of the minutes.
Okay.
I included the, our number of visits, and that was in our bid, um, so number of visits is 198,097. The unique visitors is 125,999. And the pages, the hits are 7, 7,246,308, and that was us of December, Matt.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Make a motion that we approve the Weston County Gazette as the official newspaper for 2025, Weston County, uh, of base that, so being fiscal responsible, it breaks down to the cost, I mean, we have to follow, both, both newspapers meet all the requirements for the official publication, so, but it's a cost, it's, the cost A and B is quite considerable, so that's why I made that motion.
Got motion on the floor, is there a second?
We'll second it.
It's been moved and properly seconded and further discussions.
Um, I guess I just feel like, and maybe it's, I know it's a lot more, but, um, in fairness, um, and in, um, I guess, having a different set of citizens looking at the paper and the website availability, um, it's important to young people for sure. Um, I, I would like to see us use the Newsletter Journal.
Anybody else? Um, the, all those in favor of the Weston County Gazette being the 2025 official newspaper, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? How many aye? All those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Terry? Marty again?
Uh, did I make a comment? Um, so for the last two years, um, I have made an additional advertising proposal, and I've appreciated that for our readers, um, for a few, a few special things to be advertised, and if I could be put on the next meeting agenda to discuss an additional advertising proposal for the Newsletter Journal, I'd appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, there you go.
There you go, that's.
Look at the Christmas photo.
Can I do this?
Yeah.
Give me one of yours.
Well, one.
One.
Not uncommon.
One, two, three. Now you can do a weird one. Just kidding.
Hey, weird.
Yeah, because you have to do a funny picture always.
That's your shirt.
Good, right one? Looks a little taller than this one.
If I start going down, you'll notice that.
It's so tall.
Moses happens out of blue. Seriously.
Yeah.
Thank you.
What's the new position? On the agenda, it's a new position. It's, it's my new position.
No, it's not a constitutional.
Is it required?
It doesn't constitute any constitutional.
Part-time secretary in my office.
This is just a way that we can reportion.
Yeah, that's not.
So, you're just refilling?
When this discussion happens, could I ask you to move up, so I can get anybody who needs comments? Thank you.
So, you can just fill up, refilling a little bit?
Yeah.
I thought you wanted to move up.
Just. They want one. City council.
I'm sorry, sorry. Oh, okay. What made you cry like that?
He said for each month. No, I asked for copies, you guys don't want to hand them. Once again, that communicated well.
Whenever you're ready, William, we can start.
No, that's fine.
You'd like to be. These phones. Do you anticipate other people coming, William, or you want to wait a minute?
I'm glad. Well, yeah, I think since it's a little later, but that might be. Um, who is? Good. I think we're good.
You're ready.
First of all, congratulations to the board. Thank you all for serving. Secondly, I ask the unintended, in the nature of an informational update, on the issue of constitutional district. There's been quite a few things happening. One, J.D. Williams has shown a strong interest. He sent the Citizens Group Bureau a copy of a draft bill, the LSO, it worked out for him, and asked for input, and so that was looked at, and her response was sent to J.D. with some criticism. Group feeling that the way the LSO had done it was going to have a problem complying with one man, one vote principle, and therefore asked for trouble.
Mr. Chair, could you give us just an overview of what that bill was? Or is?
It had to do with portion of the Senate, amongst other things, it provided with, provided for one senator for every county.
Okay.
The group has put together a draft, well enough to have shared with J.D. Williams, I guess you all have it now, a proposal that in Citizens Group's view would comply with the Fourteenth Amendment requirement, one man, one vote, so we don't have to argue with the test. Would manage, would, would allow the legislature to remain at a manageable size, and yet comply with Wyoming constitutional requirements of three-three. It attempts to achieve both of those goals, but the use of fractional voting. In my view, J.D.'s response to me was very interesting. He says, oh, he says, there's been a long time interest in fractional voting in Cogent County. I forget the gentleman's name, a former representative of Cogent County, had been quite an advocate of fractional voting. And so, he will get back just with further input on what they want to do with the proposal. Chip Nyman's been involved very much with, since I think the end of November, when the previous board made appointments to fill vacancies, at least to my knowledge, the other people here may know better. But he's been very involved, he had a meeting with Citizens Group in this county, expressed support for what he proceeds Weston County is trying to do. I, let me add at this point that outside the county, and somewhat in the county, it requires work by the Citizens Group to get across the point that Citizens Group does not want Weston County elevated above all other counties. It is asking the legislature to follow the Constitution with respect to all apportionment for all districts. Because there's a kind of a trap involved in this. If the legislature were to actually seat Carl in the House, or Sue in the Senate, then I, I would guess by afternoon, the Tona County or Laramie County, someone will file in federal court and said, those people in Weston County have a huge disparity in their favor in voting power now, because they get a senator with only, what, thirty-five hundred people, whatever it is. So, so, we've been working to get that point across to people, supporters. No special favor for Weston County. Do this for all districts, and then you won't have a problem, it causes us to get sued. Besides, so, Chip's invited, and Ogden's been involved. There've been invitations to the representative and senator for this district to partake in proceedings down in Cheyenne, and they can speak to that. In the works, and J.D., as of last night's email, is looking forward to getting these as soon as he can. Citizens Group is finalizing proposed resolutions, one for the House, and one for the Senate, short and to the point, saying we're going to apportion pursuant to the federal and state constitution.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the Newsletter Journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Canow. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms, and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
Short and to the point, saying we're going to apportion pursuant to the federal and state constitution. That's just going to do one or the other. Bit of strategy in that, I think, is the Constitution itself has language directed at resolutions, and resolutions that pass both Houses jointly have to be submitted to the governor, who can veto them, and then the House and Senate get a chance to override the veto, et cetera, et cetera. But it's two exceptions. One, a joint resolution that has only to do with the internal workings of the legislature. That doesn't go to the governor, or resolutions that aren't joint resolutions. So, that's why they're figuring one for the House, and one for the Senate. And they can mind their own p's and q's. If they do, things will get better, I think. I wanted to mention, I wanted to also, if it's all right with the board, ask if any, if Sue or Carl or, or had, or can he had any additional input that I missed that's informative as to what's going on. Or, Chip, who has been very active in working to get a proposal and other documents.
Mine's just short and sweet. I don't know that you mentioned that Chip Nyman has invited Carl and to go to the floor this, this, like, February, and, and provide this proposal to the House. And then he's invited anyone else who would want to go down and sit in the gallery. But Chip Nyman has said, you let me know when you're ready, and I'm going to put you on the House floor with your proposal.
And we are reaching out, it's in the process of reaching out to other counties as well, to see where they're at with this, because there's other counties that are not representative, and all of the, all the districts are not following the Constitution at this point. And so, there's a lot of the concern among the constituents of this state that want to be following the Constitution. That, they say, you know, we are not following the Constitution. What's the point of having a Constitution if we're not going to follow it? And so, that's what we're asking for, is for your help with following the Constitution.
Chris, what am I? Mr. Nyman's invited Carl as a citizen, not as a, okay.
Right, exactly. And we, at this point, don't really want to be seated as a senator or representative, because then it's going to, it's going to defeat our whole purpose of getting the, going back to the regular districts, the constitutional districts that's set forth in the Constitution that says that each county is the voting, is the district.
Carl?
I talked with Chip a while back. He's behind us a hundred percent. He discussed a couple of different ways to present this, and he left the ball in our court, suggests maybe a bill, a resolution. We discussed the resolution, and he's willing to oppose that to the House at the right time. So, he's there with us for the.
Any questions?
Listen.
Oh, I have a question for you. Have you looked at the proposal?
I'm looking at it, this one?
Yeah. Is it understandable to you, or do I got to redraft it?
It's understandable.
Thank you. Yeah, that's unacceptable, just.
And we are setting stone on that particular proposal, it's a place to start.
I appreciate Sue's simple approach on it. Seems like this topic has been discussed a lot, and, and we kind of gather up some words where we left off before. But, but defining the factuals as the basic question is, are we constitutionally district right now?
We're not.
And we are not. I appreciate the proposal being presented, although it's, it is a possibility. It's more or less saying, hey, we have put a little bit more thought into just saying, it's unconstitutional, so figure it out. So, I appreciate that approach, although it probably will be up to the legislature to, to decide in, in whichever angle they, if they are motivated, which angle to, to approach.
Agreed.
Yeah, well, and you probably grasp this correctly, just to be clear, where I am not, and I don't think anyone here today is asking the board to do anything about this proposal at all. It's simply submitted as information to indicate some of the effort that's been made.
At the last Concerned Citizens meeting, we discussed this, and we took a vote. And what we decided to do was to go down to the legislature, when we're designated to go, and present the resolution, the same resolution the Weston County signed, to go back to Article Three, Section Three, and get that passed through the legislature, and have this suggestion there. Because J.D. has expressed to me that this will be fought out in the committee. So, to get it to the committee, we got to get a resolution to get to the committee. So, we're going to present the resolution of Article Three, Section Three, and present it that way. And then if they ask for the problem solver, we can give it to whichever committee gets that assignment, and then fight it out in the committee. But the most important thing is to get our resolution passed through the House. We have both of our representatives, our senators from this county, and senator that says they endorse what we're doing, but they're not sure if they know how to do it, and they don't, maybe not support the way we're doing it, but they will help us. So, there's our three. The Secretary of State, at the, at the state convention, got this resolution through the Republican State Central Committee meeting for this deal. So, this, the whole Republican Party of the states on it, it's in their platform. And the Secretary of State got that through, and the Secretary of State said he endorses our resolution. He's not endorsing how we're going to do it. None of these guys are. But they are endorsing getting it in there. And we were delegated in nineteen, or twenty-fourteen, when you were here, Marty, to do what we've done, and to pull our legs out, or even consider pulling our legs out, before anybody has said no. Nobody said no to us, not anybody, along the system. And so, let's play it out. If, if we go to this, to the legislature, and they will not accept our resolution and pass it, then we're pretty much back to square one. But to be doing something because we're afraid we might get sued in the future, Marty, I've heard you say a hundred times. I've heard you say 100 times, well, let's just do it and see if somebody does sue us. So I say, leave it as it stands and let this play out. It's not going to cost us a dime to go to the legislature and just ask them to do the resolution of following the Constitution. That's all, all we said we were going to do until they either accept it or deny it. And we have a plan backed up to give them something to think about if they do decide it. And that's what we voted on, and if there's any other questions, I'd answer, I could.
Thank you. So the general way that the stuff, and I'm going to use the word "stuff," and I apologize, but that's what I'm coming up with, is that it has to be introduced to the committee first. And so who's going to, so is Chip going to have the resolution and introduce it and then, and then bring it to the House? Is that how it's going to work?
We haven't gotten that far. He said he would do whatever we want to do.
So we would also have, if Representative Williams has a bill out there for a Senate, that would also be introduced to a committee also. So we have two shots over the bow there. Am I correct?
He has a proposed bill in draft form. That's where he's gotten.
So he hasn't got to LSO yet?
Not yet. No, the LSO provided, drafted up what they thought he wanted, and then gave back to him to look at.
So then you guys...
He shared it with us.
So then the process right now is for you to develop a resolution to submit to the committee?
Maybe. It may be that you were at your sum more correctly on where, how the process has to be followed, and we're working through that. So I'm listening to you with both ears.
So I would do that ASAP.
Yes, thank you.
Because if a conversation is going to happen in February, this stuff moves so quickly, so fast. When you go to testify on a bill, if you're not on it, right on top of it, it's gone. It just, if it doesn't make it out of that committee, it's gone. If it makes it, you know, and then you have to pay a lot of attention to it going to the, like, this would be the Senate committee. And so, I mean, I would do that ASAP.
Thank you.
I mean, I'm not...
I think it's important to note, too, that J.D. has asked Danny to go down and testify in the committee, you know, whoever takes this up.
I don't think anybody would have a problem whatsoever, but what I'm saying is, if you do it as quick as you can, then we can get those people down there to testify. And I will tell you that if you're going to testify in any of those committees, A, sign up so that you'll be recognized, but number two, fill the room. You fill the room. And you fill the room, and you sign the sheet. Not one person doesn't sign that sheet. You sign the sheet, pardon me if that comes out funny, so that you will be recognized. If you do not sign it, you will not be recognized. So if you put your hands up, and then if you all go to this podium, in that case, most of the time, it's a desk, but you go up and wait your turn, and say something in approval of, but don't say the same thing.
Well, Chip is the Speaker of the House, which is a pretty darning part of the election. It has a lot of say on where our stuff goes to what committee. And he has said he will set a date, and he'll present it at the most opportune time. So I'm trusting him to know when he wants us there, how he wants us there. All we got to do is tell him, get him, and he said he'll do that. We want to, he wants to do it on, there was talk about going down in the first day, and he said no, and he thinks he's going to help us get a time set so we can get KOTA down there and everything else. And so things are progressing. We're right to where something important is going to happen, one way or another. And I have no idea which way it'll go. But we, he also said, we got a lot of support in the House, and he knows we've got some support in the Senate. How much, he's not sure. But we need to find out. We can't just back up. We got the horse all saddled, we're ready to leave the barn.
But you got to have a bill.
Like that?
But you got to have a bill.
Right.
Yes.
So get the bill done. A resolution or whatever, it's still going to be considered. It's still going to have HB, it'll be HBDA. But you got to have one of those. So get it in.
We have a first draft form already, and they should be done this week.
You can talk all the time, but if you don't have this in there...
I would just like to add on as a side issue for Commissioner Urban, that "stuff" is an ancient word in philosophy, and I think the Greek is chaos.
Stuff sounds...
We're not philosophers, we've been talking about stuff for thousands of years.
Sounds so much better.
Any other comment on the districting issue?
No, but thank you for letting us share the information.
I got a question. Marty, if we put up a bill, will we have to go to legislative service before they do anything with it?
What about a resolution? I think we need to meet with Marty before we call it.
We are, we're all thinking, we'll do that after their meeting.
No, you think all the time. Don't just do it after coffee.
So moving into Resolution 25-2, rescinding Resolution 24-10, I think that's a good conversation point to start with that. And I'm curious to where the thoughts go on those realms of, has the proper resolution actually been created to send down there to try to, I mean, in 2014, wasn't the resolution created in support of exactly what this is trying to do?
In 2014, commissioners of this county passed a resolution stating they stood in support, squared behind, following the Constitution. But this didn't exist in 2014. Much more citizen involvement, much more contact with fellow politicians, much more interest outside the county, veteran informed people on the issue, a lot more thought gone into it, and citizen organization and outreach. And that resolution was by the commissioners for this county. Today, we're talking, if I understood, Marty corrected, we're talking about resolutions that are, that's what I was talking about, that are going to, hopefully, taken up in the House or can one in the Senate, not for the county. Different notion of resolution, different level.
So the 2014 or 2012, or whichever one it was, was in support of Hans Hunt's plan?
No. Well, there may have been more than one resolution in that year.
Okay, that's fair enough. But it stated Article III, the whole thing, in support of the Hans Hunt's plan, because it's stuck more closely to county boundaries. So if there were two, okay, but that's what the one we did was.
I...
I don't have my computer on, I can go look.
But you also, Rec. County, in 2014, didn't go on the Board, went on record as favoring following 3.3.
Yes. I agree with that.
That's the only point I was...
So with this rescension of the other resolution, I mean, honestly, one way or the other, I'm not sure even where I stand here, because I think you found a more appropriate way to address this than what that resolution did. So I think a new resolution, so a statewide one, I think what you've come up with is it's a better path than just what occurred, because it's already been determined that that's probably not going to get anywhere. But I think perhaps you have opened a crack, and perhaps you'll have a conversation somewhere along with this. So my question is, if we rescind this former resolution, it only makes sense that we also pass one that is in or mirrors the one you're doing?
I understand, and that correctly, we're considering, the Board's considering withdrawing a earlier resolution, and that earlier resolution was the one declaring vacancies.
Correct.
I don't get what that has to do with the earlier discussion. The vacancies were filled by the previous Board in the end of November. The names selected by the Board were communicated to the Republican Party following the two meetings involved. So those vacancies were filled. Their political effect may be zilch, but it may be huge. What the out-of-county papers will do with the news that Weston County, and they get to write it in their own terms, has now attempted, or has sabotaged its own efforts to get the legislature to follow the Constitution. Attempted, or has sabotaged its own efforts to get the legislature to follow the Constitution. The political effect, I need no legal effect to withdraw that resolution. It declared vacancies, they've been filled, that's all in the past. But the political effect may be not good, not helpful to the citizens. Yes, at this Board rescinds the resolution, because there wouldn't could be made out of it by certain people in the press.
I think that could go either way.
Yes.
Beer.
The way I, I guess the way I understand it and see it, it did already, we did already pass it, those vacancies, people were nominated for those vacancies. So it's kind of a moot point, isn't it? It's already done. How can we rescind something that's already been completed? The only thing that, to me, that we could rescind is our support of it. I don't know that we can go backwards and say, okay, Sue and Carl, forget it. That looks irresponsible on our side and unprofessional. That's just my opinion.
So I guess what my curiosity is, is how do they get on our agenda?
How do I?
How do they get on our agenda?
I ask you that. Where we're at right now is, the resolution that was done in earlier, the 2024-10, okay, we declared vacancies. Now we're asking Chip and J.D., Sherry and Ogden, to represent us. We said we don't want, we don't have a representative right now, but now we're asking them to represent us, to move forward with this. I think that resolution got the ball started, got things talking, got things moving. Maybe it was a little premature the way it was done. The way you're going about it now, I have a lot more confidence that this will get something done than the way it was done earlier. By rescinding that, we've got people down there that, are they representing us or not? We sent a resolution that said we don't have representation. It's been stated that Sue and Carl will not be recognized down there, you know, will not be seated. So we have no representation. We're asking people, we're asking those who were elected in our last elections to represent us and fight for us, and they are now. They're willing to. By rescinding that, that gives clarification across the state that, hey, we don't like it, but we're going to go back, we're going to recognize the redistricting how it was. We've got the ball rolling now with you guys' work to maybe get it done.
Marty, do you want to first?
Let me listen in then.
I think my view are presently elected under current districting and seated members of the legislature are being helpful. And they're being helpful in large part because this Board brought focus to the issue when it filled those vacancies. These people are not trying to replace Chip, not trying to replace J.D. They're not trying to get seated. They're trying to take advantage of an interest that's out there statewide and doing enforcement correctly. And Chip and J.D. are willing to help and are helping the people that were appointed to fill the Constitution positions. It brought focus and helped us get to the next level of which you sound like you approved. So I agree with you that all prior efforts were somewhat, now with hindsight and where we're at, geez, that could have been better maybe, but it's in time, and we've gotten to a good place. And I hate to see you give any indication that you think the process should be short-circuited, now that it's actually getting out there with responsible people who are giving it consideration.
So I guess part of my question is, is with the, and this is speculation, and this is, we're involving human beings, and that's always your number one fault, is, do you think other legislators look down on that and perhaps take it seriously because of what Weston County did? I guess what I'm asking is, would you think there, if you rescind it, do you think there's a more strength in the body of the legislature? Or do you, I mean, all kidding aside sort of thing? I don't know. Tell me what you think here. I'm lost.
The feedback I've got was, we're asking for something, but we have no representation with it. The way you're going about it now, you know, we recognize the redistricting, we don't like it, we know everybody agrees on that. We have two representatives now that are willing to look at us and say, okay, yeah, we need to have something done, but that resolution, I mean, resolutions don't have a lot, they're not law, they don't have much teeth, but at least it's like, we're not recognizing them, so we're asking for their help. We're wanting them to fight for us, but that resolution says we don't recognize them.
No, it doesn't.
We declared the vacancies.
In the constitutional positions, they don't hold constitutional positions. They hold positions created by the legislature in defiance of the restrictions in the Constitution under 3.3. But we're not trying to blow the legislature up, we're not trying to cause a revolution. We're working to get people interested in the issue and correcting the deviation from the Constitution. That takes a little time. That's why in part, Sue's not trying to get seated, that we don't like. Upset the apple cart, we want this deliberative process to grow and strengthen and come to fruition. They're not, nobody's saying, I have J.D.'s seat. Nobody wants J.D. to lose his seat. Same with Chip.
Well, we've been criticized, there's several of the papers. Well, we've been criticized, there's several of the papers in the state as creating our own government and all this and that, and it was mentioned to go down on the first day and get kicked out because we didn't have credentials. And we talked about that, and here's my take on it, we go down there with our hat in our hand, okay? We've got the state Republican Party behind us, we've got the Secretary of State behind us, we've got two or three legislatures that we know of and supposedly more. I've been at this since 1992, and there's nobody in this world that's been at it longer than me. I have no desire to go down there and get these guys seated, I don't care if they get seated this year, I don't care if the bill gets on the floor this year, I care that the bill gets, we get a resolution, that the state representatives pass, that the legislature is going to do this. Then we could take a year to haggle out how we're going to do it. But my point is, before they can do anything, and if I speak down there, I will put this out. It's been mentioned to do a constitutional amendment. We can't do a constitutional amendment until two-thirds of the constitution legislative districts are there to vote. Does that make sense to you? Other counties can't, we got to have a constitutional legislature to follow the Constitution. So to my take, if we're going to do that, we have to get our constitutional districts filled so we can vote to amend the Constitution to whatever we got to do to make it. But that's one step at a time, one step right now is to get the legislature on board with doing something, that's all I'm here for.
So I'm actually proposing sort of like a question, because I want to understand it. So in last year, vacancy, as a result of a resolution presented to the county commissioners' board, was declared to vacancies in accordance with our Constitution. And as a result, the Republican Party was notified to hold an election for, had to come up with three names for each position in this election, three people, six people were elected. And they were elected by the representatives throughout the whole Weston County. They, precinct committee men and women came as representing their people and voted in this election. So we had an election, so if you rescind these appointments, are you rescinding an election? Because that's what I'm hearing. And so we're getting ready to fill another vacancy, hopefully this month, I think, I don't know, I'm wait, we're waiting to hear that this vacancy has been declared for the clerk of courts. So if we go through this process and we elect, we do our job and we elect somebody or a couple of people so that you can review them and appoint one of them or whatever, and we're not happy with your appointment, do we just wait till the next Board of Commissioners and rescind that?
It appears to me that we're getting pretty deep in the woods here. I think that a lot of what this is is just merely symbolic, and what you've done here and ways is you've sent, and with all due respect, you've sent person X and person Y to be our symbolic leadership down there for Weston County, so the conversation's been started, which I think is wonderful. I think that's probably exactly what needed to happen, and I think it could have been done other ways as well, I think JD is going to be a good advocate to work on this, I've discussed it with him in the line. But I just, personally, for me, the heartburn always sat with, we're nominating two people that are, it's just for show, you know, it's.
Politics is a show.
Yeah, that's very true. So, I mean, personally, I could see tabling this whole thing right now, and we sit on it and we see what happens after you have an opportunity to go down there and see if they give you whatever you were looking for, but I do think that a better opportunity for this board and for you in this battle would be a better resolution than the one that's currently in place. Probably following either these parameters set forth by JD or whatever comes up, I don't know, that may be a month away.
I'd like to just submit to Commissioner Wagner that we filled vacancies for a constitutional district, and those vacancies did and do exist for every county. We didn't replace JD or replace Chip, we filled a vacancy for a constitutional district in, at least in 2024, everyone agreed those vacancies existed. That doesn't mean Chip's out, JD's out. I don't see what it means rescinded at all. If you want to do another resolution in support of something else, that'd be fabulous.
Did we declare a vacancy or did you create a vacancy?
We declared, it's in the Constitution that that's a district. And we didn't have anyone in that, with those county lines, we had no one in that district.
Going off our county attorney's advice, he did not have criteria to declare vacancies, am I right?
Right, the commissioners, it's right in the statute where you can, the specific events where you can declare vacancies, I didn't see that particular avenue, so.
I did. So it's obviously open to different views.
I would ask that you would, Mr. Chairman, I would ask that you would either not rescind this resolution or table it, simply because this is kind of the spearhead that's got the ball moving. And we would, that's why I asked before, that we'd like your help, we would like your support in this. We're not trying to thumb our nose at any of the ones that are in the other districts, we are simply just trying to point out a fact that we are not following the Constitution. We want to follow the Constitution and we're following, we're making strides forward, and we don't know how we're supposed to do this because it's never been done before. So we're asking your support by either not rescinding your previous motion or by tabling it.
Go ahead, the board.
I have one question.
Yeah.
Could you tell me, Michael, so your second paragraph says, whereas the Weston County Board of Commissioners does not rescind said resolution for, and here's my curiosity, various practical purposes, what does that stand for?
I think William touched on that when he first started talking, and that was a little part of it. The other part of it was what happened if Carl and Sue went down there and tried to get seated, and what would happen with regard to that and litigation that could ensue, whether the commissioners had, the board had the authority to even declare the vacancy, again, we have that difference of opinion, it's the legal practical considerations that I was talking about. I feel a little different about it now, understanding that they're not going to try to get seated, this legislature, so that's, I understand that, but that's just, it feels a little different than it did before, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just a quick comment, if the president-elect does get seated, he does say he's going to do away with the Fourteenth Amendment, so then our problem will be solved, but I'm not counting on that. But we have not done anything that's likely. And there are different Attorney Generals coming in, and I think you'll see the legal system get shaped up a little bit better. A lot of this stuff that was done back in 92 was pretty shady, legal work to get done what they did, it wasn't constitutional, and they say they had no choice, but you always have a choice, not violate your oath of office, uphold the Constitution. So I'd say let it lay out, we're not, at any time, we can throw our hands up and say, we're done, we're going home, and it's over. But let's not do that yet, and it looks bad, it looks like we didn't know what we were doing or we were not committed if you guys pulled, if you rescind your support for the Constitution, that's what you're doing, is pulling your support for the Constitution if you knew it. But I like the idea of tabling it. We don't have to do it this legislature, we've been at this for 12 years, people, we're finally getting some traction, we're finally moving down the tracks, let's see where the tracks lead us to, that's all I'm asking. Carl was next.
Excuse me, I'd like to address Commissioner Wagner's point. We're not asking, I had this in my mind a moment ago.
We all do that. It's a terrible thing to lose.
What we're asking is the legislature to uphold their oath of office and follow the Constitution, we're not asking for those representatives to suddenly represent us now, because we need them. We're asking for them to uphold their oath and follow the Constitution, that's where we're at.
Just out of curiosity, I mean, when you show up down there, you're going to, you're not going to, are you going to introduce yourself as? I am Weston County.
Constitutional District Senator.
That's how you're going to introduce yourself, or represent yourself to the committee at all?
I'm not going on the floor. What?
You will not be going on the floor.
I probably won't be on the floor, so I won't have probably the opportunity to say that. So I guess that is my title, but I'm probably not going to be shoving it from the rooftop.
Yes, I know, I would want to know that I thought it might be fruitful to have another resolution. The board may wish to put matters on record in light of the developments that have occurred so I can talk. There may be support, wide support for doing something like that. And lastly, and probably position better off strategically, I would hope that, well, if the motion today is defeated, motion to rescind, the resolution to rescind the previous resolution is defeated, it could be brought up again. If it's tabled, then it's subject to Roberts rule so far as the board follows it, and will die automatically if it's not dealt with at the next meeting expeditiously. So strategically, if you want to further see how events unfold, how these people do them in Cheyenne, the support that's garnered or not.
Freckly doesn't play any of those sports, but I know that if she was, if she wanted to wrestle or play lacrosse or rugby or something, I would be very glad that she has it to where she could do it with women and not with the men.
Did you see it, Sonia, blowing up this fast and this big, did you, I mean, you're...
I'm not surprised, I'm not surprised. I know that girls have wanted to have that opportunity to do that, and so, you know, it's daunting to think about wrestling boys, and it's tough when you go into a sport pretty much knowing that there's no way I'm going to win, and to keep at it and keep passionate about it. And so to have your own division where you're wrestling against, you know, women, because like Alexis said, it's, I mean, it's just, it's biology, the boys are going to be stronger in high school than you are, no matter how good you are.
Further see how events unfold, how these people do them in Cheyenne, the support that's garnered or not, probably better off just to defeat today's resolution. It could be brought up anytime.
Yes, the state committee man for our county, at the central committee meetings, I can assure you that Weston County is being looked at very closely as to what other counties will proceed to do, and given what we are hearing today as far as this resolution and what our plans are, simply to be recognized that we want to be a constitutional district, that I think, you know, rescinding this and putting that out for everybody to see would be a harmful thing for our county in the fact that people from other counties are saying, well, how's Weston County going to do this? And they're watching us. So I think what we're doing right now is giving other counties an opportunity to move forward themselves with some of their own resolutions once they see how we do it. So I would really ask you to just not rescind that motion.
Note to that, I've also heard the other side of that argument very much, from other county commissioners, so I don't know, you know, it's a pleasure in the Lord.
I believe that we table the rescinding Resolution 2024-10.
Got a motion on the floor to table rescinding the resolution.
Is that good, that?
The movement's second, any discussion?
I see the progress that Resolution 2024-10 has gotten us, I don't want the rescinding to be a quick motion and premature on, it could be the language of the support of the county in which the constitutional districting is the direction that is preferred, there's been other language of that with individuals and commissioners that have gone down there during redistricting in support of keeping us whole, and I don't want, I don't want the rescinding of this with our first meeting in January to be the language of, no, we are not in support of that. I don't, I don't want to lose any momentum in which it's already created.
I'm going to go with William's thought process here, and he does have a point why the board does not follow Roberts rules, there are rules considering tabling. And either we state a date when we redress this tabling, or it will have a problem of going indefinite, and when we table indefinitely, it disappears. So if that's the idea of this motion, then I'm going to have to vote against it. Because if you want to put a timetable that we, to go back and look at it, then I will agree with it, but I think that this board needs to have a resolution that mirrors the resolution that will be put forth before, I would assume, and we all know what that stands for, but that it would go before the, well, how come my brain just went with me? Corporations Committee, because that's where it belongs, but you never know with legislative bodies, it may end up in A, I mean, you stand there with your eyes going, whatever, but to hope that it would be there, but, so I'm, if the maker of the motion would put a date on this, I would stand with him.
Who's date? I would like to redo my motion, move to rescind Resolution 2020, move to table the rescinding of Resolution 2024-10 for six months to give it time to progress and revisit that in six months on the consideration of rescinding.
Is that okay with the second?
You know, after hearing all the conversation here, and I appreciate what you've done through this, I would be in favor of killing that resolution, and when things get a little more worked out, come up with a resolution in, basically amending the other resolution, but a resolution that has a better idea of what direction we're going to take and how this can be done, you know, I think, personally, I think the resolution was done was a little premature, but it did get people talking, that's what I liked about that one, it got everybody to the table. To kill it right now, I think would derail what you guys have been working on, you know, now look, after hearing all your conversations, so I would like, yeah, actually, we'd kill that one, and working with your group, come up with a resolution to somewhat amend the other one, but it'd be a separate, whole standalone resolution in support of the direction that we get to go forward with this. You know, I think we're, you guys are on the right track of moving forward with something here.
So I guess, I think we have that ability to kill it in six months if this motion passes, we have the ability to kill it, and I don't know if I like the word "kill it", that'll end up on the Casper State hearing, whatever. But I think...
But I, I think there is something to the fact, I don't think it was done. I would have chosen a different way, I would have, but that's yesterday, this is today. I do, I do see it being set on the, on the table and leave that, that flycatcher there. And then when, six months, we can, we can change, we can put a new, a new one forward. So in, in what you were saying, I thought you said you wanted to kill it. I think we're just wanting to table it.
Either way, I think redo it.
Okay.
I think Ed was talking about killing 25-2.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Oh, still killing this one, that's not even on up yet.
The one that's on the table today, not the one that's passed.
Oh, I apologize profusely.
And then the new one would amend it.
It may be too late to take a lot of unwinding, but it sounds like the person that put the resolution to rescind on today's agenda now wishes to take it off.
I, I don't think we have to do anything on that. We need a discussion.
It'll just die on its own.
Right, anybody can bring it up again in the future. It's not maybe six months.
Six months might be better than six months.
Call for the question.
Who did guys table and talk to?
All right, there's a motion on the floor to table it for six months. All those in favor of tabling Resolution 25-2 for six months? Please vote yea or aye.
Aye.
I have a question, I guess. Because the, the new resolution was part of the discussion also. So should that be part of the motion that that's going to no longer be?
My understanding is that is the motion, we're table on 25-2, which in effect kills 24-10.
The motion is moved to table rescinding Resolution 2024-10 for six months.
All right.
And then there was a second right there.
With no, no intention of doing anything with 25-2. Okay, rephrase.
Okay.
Apologize. All those in favor of rescinding Resolution 24-10, please vote aye.
No, no. We're moving to table Resolution 2025-2, which is rescinding Resolution 2024-10 for six months.
I thought that's what I said the first time. Okay, in favor of that, please vote aye again, I'm sorry.
On the table, correct?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Table for six months. Thanks, I'm in for everybody.
There's no discussion on Ed's mo- You, you actually pulled your motion, you said you'd take it back.
But he didn't move it.
I didn't take the motion. No, I know. You said you just rescind it, didn't. Yeah, I mean, it's just, or to table it so we can see where, what direction we're going.
I feel like leaving things on the table.
It's all about stuff.
All right. All right, let's take a ten minute break. Girls, we're getting started here.
What's the topic? The floater.
About a minute, you're gonna probably have to sneak up if you talk, because these guys tend to visit for quite a while. I'm getting older.
No, absolutely, we'll take pictures because I need to send them in for a report. So I was like, I'm gonna wait until I have good pictures to see.
Absolutely.
All right, it's 10:50. Ms. Litt, you're on the agenda.
All right, well, really, I, I'm just gonna talk for like a minute before I turn the floor over to Mrs. Knapp and her students. So I just wanted to bring flyers for our open house tomorrow in Newcastle and Thursday in Upton. So each of you will have a printed invite. It's your home, the fridge, or wherever you want. We'd love to have you stop and see us for our open house at our new office. And then Upton will be at the community center. So just so we can kind of get the word out and start sharing some information. I actually have with me today, Mrs. Amanda Knapp, who's the counselor at Upton High School, and three of our sources of strength peer leaders. And I know last time I kind of gave you some highlights about some of the really cool things that they were doing. And so I thought it would be better for them to share what they're doing rather than me talk about what they're doing. And I also brought these little pamphlet brochures that talks about what sources of strength is. Because I know that sometimes it's, it's easy for me to talk about it because I know what it is, but it's not always as easy for others to understand. So there's one of these for each of us all. And then, Mrs. Knapp, I will let you take it from there.
Hi, I'm Amanda Knapp, I'm the high school counselor at Upton High School. And here with me today, like I said, we have three of our, we have 14 trained peer leaders and we have five adult advisors for sources of strength at Upton High School. And so I brought three of mine today, like I said, just to talk about the things we're doing over there. So we did three kind of bigger campaigns right in December. Kind of with Christmas, it all kind of ties in a little bit. So I have Paige Mills here, she's gonna talk about our first campaign. I have Willie Jackson, she's a 10th grader. She'll talk about our second campaign. And then I have Kayden Seminole, also a 10th grader, who's gonna talk about the third campaign we did in the month of December. I will turn it over to Paige.
I'm Paige, and the first campaign we did was the 25 Days of Christmas Peer Challenge. It was partnered with the FFA, and it was just a family competition between all the classes, freshman through senior, where we had a list of challenges, we could put challenges. And we challenged them just like, do the things, kind of, the generosity was the strength. And there were just different activities where they challenged themselves, others in the community to be kind and stuff. And, yeah.
So for our second campaign, we made ornaments at Upton's Christmas kickoff at Old Town. For this activity, our target strengths were family support, positive friends, mentors, and generosity, which you can see on the sources of strength wheel. Us, our peer leaders and adult advisors encourage kids and community members to make a Christmas ornament for a family member, friend, or mentor. We also provided the community with a healthy activities such as arts and crafts. We also included a photo booth. This was a great opportunity for the sources of strength and community to socialize together. We also got the word out to the community members about sources of strength. And at this activity, we offered pamphlets and papers to community members who are interested in coming and volunteering.
So our third campaign was we made goody bags for all the students in our school. Targeted strengths for generosity and need to help. Our peer leaders put together a goody bag for every single student in the school. That included homemade jerky, homemade baked goods, candy, hot chocolate, and popcorn. The peer leaders also wrote a personalized uplifting message for every student. We personally handed these out before school got out for break. If you wanted all the students to go home for Christmas break, I'll give it a note.
And then I just want to talk about one of the things we, this will be our third year, so an upcoming campaign we're gonna do, we call it our self-care seminar. It's about, we take about two and a half hours during the day. And usually in February, we, there's about five different sessions that we run the kids through. So some of the things we've done in the past were where we worked on healthy activities. So we let them do like, they get to read for 20 minutes, they get to do art for 20 minutes. They get to, like, last year we did what we call plant therapy. They just got to go and plant some plants. But just showing them that there's, you know, lots of different healthy activities they can do when they get stressed out. We do physical health in that, we make sure we hit physical health. Last year's physical health was dance, dance. They got to come in my room for 20 minutes, one of the sessions, and do dance, dance for 20 minutes. And it was absolutely, it was a blast. So that was fun. We talk about also the importance of mental health and then talking to someone, especially, you know, when you're stressed out. So like for our lunch, because part of this is during our lunchtime, we provided, I think the first year we did Taco, Taco bout at Tuesdays, so we provided tacos as lunch. How important it is to talk to people when you're struggling with things. Last year, I think it was like pizza, give me a pizza, your mind, or something like that. So we had pizza. So we try to come up with, you know, fun ways to do it, so it's not, you know, super serious. But at the same time, just the importance of, you know, talking when, when you're struggling with things. So we'll be doing that again this year. Like I said, we usually do it in February. So, yeah, this will be our third year, the kids love it. They asked, the first time after last year, they came back and were like, can we do that again? So we're, we're gonna keep it going as long as we can. So, yeah, that's, I think, about it. So all of the things that the peer leaders and the adult advisors do, they have five adult advisors within the school. And all of those things are funded through our community prevention grant dollars and our direct for community dollars. So that's, that's where I come in and help kind of coordinate those things. They have a new, they have a training, a training coming up on the 21st of January. So that they do a training, a peer leader and adult advisor training every year. And this year, we have a national trainer coming to do that training. These young ladies have only ever had me as a trainer because I'm a certified sources trainer. So they get to experience a national trainer, which is pretty cool, this year. And we also, we'll have one for Upton Middle School on the 23rd and then Upton, or Newcastle High School on the 22nd. So if you have some time in the morning, we do an adult advisor training from 7:30 to 10:30 on each of those days. But we also invite people from the community to come and just check it out and be a part of that and kind of see what sources is about and maybe pick up some things that you can use in your own life too. Because sources isn't just for, for young people, it's for, for all of us. So if you have any questions for them or-
I think it's pretty awesome to put some faces to the actual program for change instead of, not that we don't love seeing-
I agree.
I got a question, how many peer advisors are taking a part in Upton?
So we have four, or 16 peer advisors, peer leaders who get trained. Now, with that being said, we do invite anyone in the school to, so when we have meetings, I put it out there, like, if you wanna come and join. In fact, we had like one of our students who's kind of, she hasn't been trained yet. And I think we'll have her trained, even though she's a senior, because she's been coming, like, she just, she likes doing it. So anytime we do any of the campaigns, we invite all the kids to do it. It's not just a, these 14 kids, you know, participate, everyone gets to participate. We don't wanna exclude anyone. But as far as training, we have 16 trained peer leaders right now.
I think like, was inviting like students to join, we've gotten like a lot of different kids with like different backgrounds and interests in like different classes that they take. But they can kind of like spread what we learned during those meetings to like different classes. It's not just like the same group of kids too.
All right, you guys, that's pretty neat. Anybody got anything?
Well, I just, what I like about it is you can see what you're starting here, it's, it's just, it's, it's spreading out, you know? It's, it's positive things that you'll carry through your whole life, you know? You learn how to deal with stress and things at a young age. When you get older, when the stress hits you, you're gonna be like, okay, I remember what I was taught when I was young. It's a life lesson that you'll, you'll take through life, which is really good.
I just was on a call before I came with our national trainer, they told us coming from- I just was on a call before I came with our national trainer, they told us coming from Colorado to do the training. And I told her, in the 20-plus years I've been doing this work, this is the program that I really think, if I had to all make in one basket, this would be it, just because of exactly like skills. And, and the fact that it really isn't, it's not Student Council 2.0, that's not the goal. And we always say when we pick peer leaders to do the lunchroom test, if you were walking to lunchroom, you know, there's usually groups of kids that sit together, and we want a kid from every one of those tables. So we want a leader, we want kids who are leaders within their own peer groups. Leaders within the school, but primarily within their peer group, because exactly what the girl said, because then they take what they've been doing, their work, and spread it to their own peers.
You know, you or I control these young adults, you know, this is what you need to do, and it's like, yeah. But when you've got one of your own, students your own age, say, hey, you know, this is, you know, go down this path, it's a little bit better. It sticks and, it sticks with you and sticks in longer and better.
We always tell them when we know that none of us are getting through this life without going through some really hard and crappy stuff. So we just want to give you some skills to help you get through.
I apologize. I did not, you know, Mother Nature is this evil, evil creature sometimes.
Brings a lot of stuff.
She's, she's a stuffy girl. So thank you for your presentation.
Too bad Ed missed a little school.
Yeah, they'll come back, they'll get back right in time for lunch.
Good work, sounds, yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Like I said, I'm sorry about your presentation, but I did get to hear all three of you. And you need to be extremely proud of yourself. For you to come up and stand before us, we're just, we're just, the, the people at the grocery store and everything else, but it is intimidating with this big, huge desk. And for you to be able to do that, I have every faith that there is that you can talk to another kid. And that's pretty impressive. And you need to be proud of yourself.
Thank you, your honor. Ms. Knapp?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
No, most of that won't sit up. Look at these people in the back, they want to come up to the bottom.
Sandra, whenever you're ready, I can pick her back up.
I don't know.
We're right on schedule, actually, by the end of-
I know, look at me. So the reason that I'm here, I'm up front, Marty, just for you.
You, the gorgeous girl.
Thanks, baby. So the reason that I'm here is because some of you may have known that I'm bringing in an event. About four months, five months ago, I guess it's been, I was approached, when I was president of the chamber, I went around to other chambers and I did a couple of things in other states and I went and visited some of them. Well, about four months ago, somebody reached out to me and said that they are disbolishing, I guess that's the word, their motocross and their autocross and their drag racing in South Dakota. And the, the drag race that they are doing it at is now going to be in RV Center. So they asked me if I would take it over. When they were finished with it, they had 1,800 cars and anywhere from 5,000 to 8,000 people that attended that event. I said, oh heavens, no, 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 no. Well, here I am, I took it over. Right now, that event will be the end of July. It'll be, Wednesday will be registration, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. We're gonna try it for one weekend to see if our town can sustain what I think is coming. July 17th, 18th, 19th, and 20th. Right now, I'm turning cars away because I have too many. Our autocross will be at the high school parking lot on Friday, Saturday, we're gonna drag race down Main. And we have, Friday and Saturday, we'll have Main Street shut off. Friday night, we'll do the band and the People's Choice Awards for the race cars that are coming. I do have a comedian coming, and I also have drivers that are coming from all over. Actually, my drivers are coming from, that are registered. My drivers that are coming are coming from Florida, Washington, Nebraska, Canada, Texas, Iowa. I also have Penzola drivers at the Penzola, Florida race that were there a month ago. I've got two celebrity drivers that are supposed to attend, that are coming to this event. The reason that I'm here, I guess, is I definitely want to involve everybody in the community I can involve. Because the reason that we're doing this is to bring substantial amount of people and to have this every year as an annual thing, to bring the income into our community. We need something here to bring us a little bit of tourists. They were doing it for seven days. I'm in a tryup for four, actually three, because Wednesday's registration, to see if we can even sustain that and if we can do that. I just put a board together and my board and I will be meeting for the first time this month. But I've got in place the insurance, I've talked to the highway department, I've talked to the fire department, I've talked to the search and rescue, I've talked to all of the paramedics, I've talked to the city council, I've talked to the engineers, I've talked to everybody that I have to have in line to do what I need to do for this. The highway department and the maintenance department are going to bring concrete pillars down Main Street. And then I need permission from you guys, if I can, to bring the- And then I need permission from you guys, if I can, to bring the seats from the fairgrounds over, we're gonna put them up there. It'll be a half-mile track. The last 60 feet of the mile, we can't have any pedestrians down there. They've got to come back because most wrecks will happen at the end when they're going to stop. So, I've done a lot of research on what we need, where we're at, insurance permits, what we're liable for and where we're at. I've talked to motels, I've talked to the restaurants, I've talked to vendors. I've got 42 vendors right now on board. I've talked to a couple of places in Gillette. I've got the trampoline park in Gillette that's willing to bring blowups and take Dow Park on Saturday and make it into a kids' event. So that everybody is involved and hopefully, all of our merchants in Newcastle will sustain from this. Our merch that we're doing on our t-shirts and our logos that we're sending out there, we've got both t-shirt places in town that we're going to involve to make our t-shirts to sell. And so, I think it's a courtesy to let you guys know that we're doing it. I would like some input or questions or... It's going to be called...
Yeah, it's a hand figure event.
That's what I'm just gonna tell you. It is, and I got kind of a little, and I do have the map. Chuck actually finished my map. It's Summer Classic Drags is what we named it. Summer Classic Drags, Newcastle, Wyoming. And these cars are not going to be subject to one car. It's any car that wants to drag race and any car that wants to do autocross. And so, we're not limited to that one thing. And our poker run, because South Dakota has offered some bonus money and because we involve them in a couple of things, so we're doing a poker run from Wyoming and South Dakota on both sides that they're gonna do on Thursday morning. We've asked the fire department if they want to put on the pancake feed so they can make some money. We've asked the youth group to help. And we've also asked Church on the Hill if they want to open up their doors and do a pancake feed every morning. Because a lot of our fire department folks work and so, they're not gonna have time to come off to do those during those weekdays. And so, we're trying to involve as many folks as we can in the community to make money. Our town may not be able to sustain what the other communities have brought in. Like I said, their top number was 8,000 people. I don't know that we could sustain that. When I talk to the city council, I'm trying to get numbers of those that are bringing their RVs in. They are going to clear off some ground for us. There'll be self-contained RV centers. I've got some private lots that are willing to let us put them there. I've talked to all the motels. I've talked to Doug that runs all of the lodges to get some help with and all the motels here. I've even talked to some folks that are willing to do B&amp;Bs in their house. Questions?
Sounds like you've done a lot of work. There's a million questions.
Okay, let's hear it.
Wait.
I do have one. You did, you said something about, well, you had to come to us to ask for the stands. I think you have to go to the third one and ask.
I, I will go to them, but I wanted to make sure that everybody was involved with their meeting and need to ask for them. You guys, I've already talked to Eric and them and I do have a meeting at the Fair Board. But ultimately, I want everybody on board. And if I've done something wrong or I need to fix something, I want everybody on the same page.
What's Facebook? Everybody will tell you if you've done something wrong.
Yeah, I don't care for Facebook. I think there's a lot of political crap on Facebook.
I agree.
From my understanding, the race will actually come through downtown Newcastle?
It, it, so...
So, they'll have, like, concrete barricades on either side?
So, we are, but it's gonna be from second down. We've talked to the refinery. So, where I really wanted to have it was from the four-way stop, that Highway 16 coming, most of you know where my office is, past Lopinjad there, and then stop at the summit, because that's really flat and you had it there. However, when I went to meeting and I talked with the highway department and the maintenance department, the semis can't make that turn, right? And we don't want to cut any traffic off or in, by any means upset anybody. So, we said, okay, now where? So, Chuck and the rest of my board did this map. Is this the right one? We did three of them, so I'm hoping this is the right one, I think it is. So, what we're gonna do is we're gonna start on Second Street and we're gonna run west and come down and stop. And our turnoff to where, because the cars have to have a place to go in and then if something's wrong, we've got to have the tow trucks be able to get in to pull them out or if there's an emergency vehicles to get in. So, on the end, we've got the refinery that's gonna help us. We've got CLT that's gonna help us. And then we've got the highway department port that's right there that's gonna help us on that side. So, that's where they think right now is the best way to have it, is right down that area. So, the pedestrians are gonna be out of the way, there's not gonna be many houses. It's gonna be a great run.
So, that's on Main, like, west of the railroad tracks bit?
We're not gonna be by the railroad tracks, yes.
Okay.
Sandra's been busy.
Don't tell anybody. Don't tell anybody.
You already did.
Don't tell anybody.
Any questions for Sandra?
Also, yeah, great planning, Sandra.
Thank you.
It sounded to me like, when I was chatting with you and Pam, that you guys had a lot of groundwork already done with it. Also, had you talked with the fairgrounds with the camping sites and whatnot available?
We did, we asked them. The problem is, is from what I'm getting from all the drivers that are coming, is they don't, they can't take these cars on gravel roads. So, there's, they're real touchy about some of these cars, I guess. Not my pocketbook, some of them are very expensive into that money. So, when they do this, they have a lot of money involved. And so, they don't want any gravel roads. So, if they can carpool them in there to get them out, which I've already talked to the transportation department at the buses and I've got a meeting with the senior center. So, because we have beer and we're gonna have open gardens at the school where we have in the autocross, we can't have alcohol in there. So, we've shut down the road and we're gonna have open gardens there. And then the alcohol to move people and because of the traffic that's so done, I went ahead and contacted the transportation department at the school for their little buses and the senior center to see if they would like to use their little van to their bus to transport people so we don't have a lot of traffic. And we can get some tips them. If not, I've already talked to the school and I'm talking to some of the seniors to see if they want to use their car and be Uber drivers for that weekend to make money on an event. So, we aren't having nine million cars that were nowhere to park. And we'll just have pickup and drop-off spots for the alcoholics.
That's great, I didn't know how I was gonna get there.
That was great.
Oh, no, we're not hoping, we need it to. Because I will go, oh, gosh dang it. But right now, I think it's, it's coming together pretty good. I've still got some places to go and to get okayed. But I think you guys need to be on board of and understand what we're doing. And if you have any questions or if there's anybody that wants to help, participate, volunteer, we would sure welcome it because it's gonna be a big one and we like to bring it back every year. I do have three investors that I've been talking to, that I'm working with, and some land that if this works out for the first couple of years, they're willing to build us a track. And that's what I'm hoping to bring here, is a great big track, something that we can bring some touristy and some money into our community. So, that's what I'm trying to do.
Thank you, Sandra. There you go. Awesome work.
Me too. Hey, well, that was easy. Thanks, guys. Thank you.
All right. Yep, sir.
Have you all been? Well, it's been a few months since I came because we were going into this testing mode and not much gonna happen and I feel like that won't happen. I'm not sure that we're testing. We, as we talked about before, you know, this is a very technical and highly sophisticated plant with all kinds of connections and interfaces and more things than others. So, our electrical and computer interface has been our biggest challenges. And we're pretty much worked out on all of that kind of, that. So, we had other things that we expected, you know, some piping issues and more things. We've had some whole weather issues. And, which is good because we found out what, what those issues are and we can, we fixed that and we corrected it and made some, some changes. So, having said that, we're, we're not gonna, we shut down for two weeks on the crux. And so, we're just kind of getting back into the swing of things now. The company that did our controllers, gonna be here for probably about another week and a half. And so, we're gonna be doing that kind of thing, processes, testing our processes. And now that we're kind of getting to that point, we'll kind of start that company. Nobody has a huge desire to start this plant up with actual product before the first of March, you know? We're looking at, you know, February is our coldest month. So, everybody's decided, it probably makes a lot of sense to get by that before we start the process of the startup of actually running product. I think I said last time, we're, we're ready with a lot of that product. We've already crushed it. And we have to crush it, put it in big bags, look like oversized bowls, actually. Because we crush it so fine. So, we're pretty much at that point. You know, there'll be a few things going on. There's some governmental type people coming in in a couple of weeks. And we're gonna do some tours with them, with some explaining. As much as we're gonna explain, you know, we don't, the problem, everybody is a very tightly kept secret, the whole process, because it's, it's so innovative and new and it's a closed system. We've got two security fences up. I think I told you last time, we've got cameras and we, the security has timed that a lot. I think that we're, we're probably gonna get by these, these tours. Anybody that comes out in the future, we've got inside, we have two offices, two office buildings, one, one is security and that sort of thing. You can come in there and along the wall, it kind of takes you through the whole process and the plant and that sort of thing, and the big posters, pictures. And a lot of, a lot of things are gonna happen right there. That's where people will see what's going on. But actual tours in the plant going through it, other than some Department of Defense and people like that, not gonna be, there's not gonna be any tours anymore. So, all in all, we're, we're pleased with where we're at. We're, we basically can, obviously, we can go quicker than March. We, we basically can, obviously, we can go quicker than March. But it's just a whole lot of reasons why we think it's probably better not to. So, kind of where we're at, we're gonna buy it down there. Any questions?
It's been a while since I talked about rare earths. But, so when you say you're no longer gonna have tours, is, is the lack of tours due to proprietary information? Or, or, okay, and not security information? I know there's a similarity there, but is, is there a question of security for other things than stealing proprietary information? I mean, because there'll be other security issues?
No, no, basically, no. I mean, there, the only, as you all know, the only place that rare earths are processed to, you know, is China.
Correct.
Or plants that China controls. Everything that's produced worldwide goes to them. And then, of course, they control, they control the end product, basically. And if you've been watching movies, you notice they're, they're getting, they keep pulling things, they keep tightening up, restricting what they'll ship and maybe they'll ship it to. There's concerns about that. The processes that, that they have, their plants, I compare them to the old uranium processing, you know, where you have all the tailings ponds and they, they just dump everything out on the ground. Ours is a totally closed loop system. We reprocess everything, we even reuse the acid. So, it goes through a, through a process before it goes back into the tanks and then it's reused. And, you know, I think I've mentioned this before, we lose about 2% in the process, in the process.
Of rare earths? You lose 2% of the rare earths?
Because of acid.
Acid, okay.
Yes. And so, you know, it comes in, when it comes in on the plant, it's made into a solution, it goes through the whole process. Like I've said before, it looks like a combination of a plant with big tanks and this and that, but what the other part of it looks like is science, right? You know, with this whole glass or the column, the glass, this big round and 30-foot tall and have that kind of, there's so many, so many different parts and pieces to this process. It's, like I said, it's very complicated, but it's, it's also very innovative. It's not, this is the fifth plant we built. It's bigger every time. And for your benefit, because I know you haven't been here for all these years. What's in this plant, component-wise, is exactly what we'd be in the main plant. It's, it is final size. And it's just, there'll be a lot more of them. This, what we have here will be 20 or 25 of those. It'll be like, each one of them lying in the central process. So...
Sorry. I'm just a nerd here. So, are you, when you're extracting rare earths, you are, I mean, you won't tell me if you can? Are you after one specific, like, what was it? Zorana Dean or whatever that was, or do you have several?
Do we have one?
Several different rare earths? Different, several, different components?
There's 17 different elements.
Oh, yes, that's exactly what I'm asking. Elements would have been a good word for me to use, sorry.
Rare earth elements, they're called.
Yeah, okay.
And there's neodymium. I, there's, don't make me name them all.
Oh, please.
Because I can tell you right now, I can't.
I'm done.
I can read it, but, and then I can't pronounce them.
That's fair.
But we will process all of them.
From wherever they come from? From wherever they come from?
We have our mine, we have all of the rare earths.
You have all 17?
All 17.
Okay, fair enough. So, you're not importing anything in?
Not all mines are created equally. They don't all have everything or enough of a, an amount, about any. People talk about, we talk about the ore that we have. And we talk about certain neodymium and those things that are important to rare earth magnets, which is the big deal, as definitely that's the Department of Defense and satellites, rockets, all of that kind of stuff. That's the real, their focus. The, all the elements have a use. But the, the five biggies that are going to rare earth magnets are the, are the real focus. Our, our mine is considered a world-class reserve. And we measure our, the products in percent. And for example, the, the mine in Whelan, they measure them in percent per minute. So, there's a huge difference in what the quality of the rare earths are, no matter where they come from. You know, so, we are very fortunate in what we, what we have and what we deal with. And this same system, this plant, will process a certain portion of those elements. And this same system, this plant, will process a certain portion of those elements the first pass through. Then, everything goes back through again, and they process out more to a different, to one of the different lines and facilities than we are. So, I can say it's very complicated, it takes a long time to process, to process all set up here now. But when we're done, it concentrates, and we're, we're looking at having a complex, where we have our plant, we've got several magnet companies that we want to build and be right next to us. We have an alloy company who's talking to us, we have a company about England right now talking to us about. So, it will ultimately be a complex, it will be more than just us.
Mr. Turner. So, is there a chance that you could be bringing other in? I mean, this is not a limitless supply that our, our rare earths in our Black Hills. Could there be, I mean, like, you know, you hear the story of the, there's a rare earth in a coal ash. Can you pull that, I mean, that's competition, but they may say, why don't you guys do it instead? Or could, you know, you have a rail, sorry.
Well, first thing is, they gotta know what they have before we know what we can do, and they gotta know what they have. I worked in the coal business for a lot of years, and to process coal scalpings and to get a significant amount of rare earths out of it, I'm personally, and this is just me personally, very skeptical.
Fair enough.
Okay. We, we have been contacted with other companies who have rare earth deposits about processing some of, of their products.
Good.
And we are, we are talking to them, and we go, they're competition, maybe. There isn't, there isn't another known reserve in North America that comes close to our reserve, except maybe one in Canada that comes close to the high-end quality that we have. So, let's process other people, other companies, it's something that's doable for us. Because we have two different things, we have a mine, we have the process in place.
Right, so, I mean, one, if one should exhaust, and I'm not saying it will, but you'd have to, I mean, it's not a, a dry up and we're gone, and maybe you have nobody for that. So, if I may have another follow-up, because I'm being, you know, so, um, so, we could have a security issue too. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I mean, if you've got the best that there is to have, somebody else might want that. I mean, I, I, I'm just putting it out there that if there's, if somebody wanted something, certainly.
Well, the claims are up, you know, for the, for the mine. And, and part of that is on a forest service, and part of it's on land that we own.
Oh, good.
So, you know, the life of that mine is based on a very small footprint, just forty years.
Cool.
And that's, you're talking about three quarters of a mile long and a little over a quarter mile wide, you're not talking about a huge area. The, you know, in the world, last year, there was just a little over a hundred and twenty thousand tons of rare earths processed. It's not like coal, where there's millions of tons of wheat go through Newcastle, you know, it's not likely.
Yeah, the last time we had the, when we had the rare earths, the talk was, if they were lucky by the end, there would be a talk.
So, anyway, that's where we're at, where, as I say, we've got our products, and we're gonna run with our own, which you might consider competitors, but they're really, for our plants, they're not really competitors, they're really a customer.
Thank you for your information. Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Roger, is there an explanation on, on why that piece of property is so rich with the quality of rare earths? Like what you're saying, is there, is there a way?
No, but I could answer for you. It'd be easy for me to talk over my head, I probably already have. No, I, you know, why it's, why it's so rich there, I couldn't tell you. Like I said, there's a couple of spots in Canada that, that come close, but this is a world-class. And there, there's more known in that, in that area, it's just, you know, how far out do we go? We, we have, beyond what we've got, we still have other claims around. So, it's forty years of the EM, for expand. Yeah. But why it's so rich here, I need to bring a GLA instead of Italian.
Yeah, it's a difficult, let some devil power come to the surface.
It's aliens.
Is it ion exchange? Is that what you're getting at?
What's that?
Is it ion exchange?
Right there.
Is that part of the process? Ion exchange? You're trading molecules off of like resines?
You know, the technical part of this, what we do, it, I couldn't really tell you. And, and there's a good reason for that. They don't tell me.
Yeah.
You might get kicked at the bottom of the school, sir.
It's a, the, the secret sauce, there's not that many that know, that's what they keep saying, the secret sauce.
Okay, Colonel Sanders.
And, and there's good reason for that. I mean, it's, the security issues we worry about are, you know, we're not worried about somebody local going up there and going there and you, you could come back out and almost tell much about it as I can, you know? But the Chinese specifically would love to have detailed pictures of where we're at right now.
Same.
And they would love to figure out the process that we have. And that's why it's a very close, kept secret. Seventy percent of the company, seventy-three percent of the company is owned by General Atomics.
Which, which is?
Which is the largest defense contractor in the world.
Fair enough.
And they are a US company. And they are, they are not a publicly traded company, they're a private company, they're huge. And they are very protective of secrets, which is good, you know? And it is a secret.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We better move on.
All righty.
Appreciate it.
Thanks to see you, Roger.
I will, when we restart processing and have more exciting things, then we'll be back.
Yeah, I want the first magnet. I want the first magnet.
I don't know about first. Thank you all.
Hey, Roger.
Yeah.
Mallow, here's our next article description. Apparently Becky has some.
Yeah, so, unlike Michael, I got a very different answer from LGLP.
Can't speak racist, it's an old paper, kid.
Let me, thank you.
I think we have seventy-five.
They gave me lots of information pertaining to what we were asking, you know? We can have a volunteer. This was their answer to me. LGLP provides coverage for our members' employees. Employees can include volunteers. And I have given you a copy of stuff that we can tweak. It's volunteer release and waiver liability, three examples of volunteer position descriptions, and also a public and non-profit volunteer handbook. So, I emailed that to you guys as well. It's very informative, it covers what we need.
So, basically, what this answers the question is, is can Mr. Lewis work up at Mallow in some form or capacity be covered by the county's insurance umbrella?
Yeah.
So...
As a volunteer.
As a volunteer. However, I suppose he could still be, remain to be able to be hired by the Mallow board for other activities that he performs up there, correct? And if he's under that umbrella?
No, it's a contradiction, because he has to be a volunteer or an employee.
So here's the problem, then, they were looking at potentially, from my understanding of it, using some of the, like, so paying the cleaning company to come in there. And the dynamics of a husband-wife duo up there completely makes sense to me. And the husband could go, go in and perform some of these additional duties and be compensated for it.
So that, there's only five thousand dollars in that? And that is, that was for like the contract cleaner? So, if he does that, that could be as a contractor?
But that doesn't waive his liability for...
So that, that is only, so that's only four hundred bucks, so much.
So I don't think that we, what they're looking for is a volunteer.
That was discussed in Upton, to look, to ask him a volunteer, because if he's a contract, he has to provide his own equipment, he can't use the county equipment. So that's why we said, he can't be a contract, because he has to provide all his own equipment and not use the county. So we said we were gonna ask him a volunteer.
But that's where it came to the muddy, it got muddy, because Michael was gonna look into whether, as a volunteer, there was any way to legally make him capable of using the, say, the lawn tractor or whatever.
He can.
Yeah.
All of this says that, and that he can. As a volunteer, he can still run all of the equipment, and that says that.
He just can't be compensated. Once he becomes compensated, then he becomes a contractor, and falls into a whole other realm of have to provide his own equipment.
It says that very clearly in this handbook.
And it gets really complex, and I don't know if you guys, I got my email yesterday from, I talked to Tom Thompson at LGLP, and I guess they're doing this pilot program, he's, they're gonna pay for one-time consult with an employment attorney who specializes in this.
The new store. This is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy, we have a bootlegger's liquor, the deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing, the coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's thirty people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their doughnuts. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
They're gonna pay for one-time consult with an employment attorney who specializes in this, and I think that's probably a good idea if you guys wanna look into this further.
I don't think that's a horrible idea, a volunteer could still technically be a provide contract labor to that entity, right? Am I wrong?
I don't know if you're right or you're wrong. Not for me to judge, that's higher up. But, you know, when we gave that five thousand dollars way back when, it was for vacation purposes. It was so that the original caretaker could take a vacation, because it was a twenty-four hour, I mean, they couldn't just leave and go do whatever they wanted. So the, it to be used on a contract kinda goes against what, you know, what we originally used it for. If the idea was that Mallow was going to hire a contractor, that would be under their, you know, their financial, like, because we, the former board had decided that, I mean, they were gonna be self-sufficient, other than the manager, because of LGLP's requirement that it be a county employee. So, that's where I get this, this interesting thing. But there was a time that there were board members, because they had a gap in the, in the, having a caretaker, that the board members ran Mallow. And so they must have been under some impression that they were okay to run Mallow. You know, they did reservations, they plugged the streets, you know, the roads. So somewhere to me, it is my opinion that this decision of whether or not an employee has to be under the, the Mallow decision, if they wanna hire another employee.
Just, before you go ahead, I think you might, you can see it.
No, yeah.
That might not be bad if you just look at it quick.
What do you want? Oh, thank you.
The discussion we had, if, we're not making this decision from Mallow, we're just kinda helping them, if I take, they were, they were coming to us for some guidance, if they could, where, if we could help them find out the difference between, if Jimmy could help them volunteer up there, but we may, need to make sure that he's covered under the liability insurance. We're not, we're not wanting to make the decision from Mallow, we're just actually kinda help them getting them information to make their decision.
That's the difficult part, you gotta remember, there's two hats we're trying to wear here, and I, that was, I probably misspoke initially, when I was talking about volunteer slash, I mean, can they, they volunteer, and then Mallow, and they fall under our volunteer umbrella at Mallow, and then Mallow can hire whoever they want to do contract labor? I don't know, that might be the question, I guess, but maybe Michael can find out if there's.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I thought I could just call up, but then they said they have this program, so, I, if you guys wanna spend that, or use that three hundred, nearly three hundred dollars on that issue, I mean, it's, this is really specialized stuff that people just do.
Well, let me try again. So, if this person is a member of Mallow?
Not anymore.
He resigned.
Oh, then we don't have Mitch?
Yeah.
Let's take an injury.
Yes.
I would assume, like, John Croucher, you could volunteer, do volunteer work up at Mallow and fall under our, our umbrella of insurance, and he can also be hired out by Mallow to come dredge the pond out, potentially, contractor, but I just don't see what that would...
It's just, what they're gonna have to do is they're gonna have to very defined on...
But it's volunteer.
When is someone volunteering, or when they're contracted? That's something they will have to, I feel they would have, have a fine line and define it very succinctly.
What services are you providing?
As a contractor or as a volunteer.
So where would we, as a board, I mean, do we have to have some kind of paperwork that says we are now relegating your determination over this new volunteering? And to get us out of, I mean, I can hear somebody come back and say, but, you know, I, I rest this note, I don't know. Well, I gotta put it that way, but, you know, I think it's easy to convolute this, it starts to bleed into...
This question.
To, to us.
It sounds to me like the, the Mallow board is trying to consider maybe the, the most simplistic way of accommodating the volunteer of the spouse without the creation of a part-time position or a position period? I mean, that's...
Well, they asked to have, when they first came here, they said that they were hiring her as the new fairgrounds manager, that they, or Mallow manager, and then they were gonna hire, they were going to hire Jimmy part-time out of their budget, and they could cover it. That was the very first discussion when they first came to Mallow. That was the very first discussion when they first came to you guys. You guys asked me what my opinion was. I said, "That's fine. We have the money to hire Christie out of our budget, but we don't have it in our budget to pay Jimmy." And they said, "Not a problem. We have that covered." Then it came to where they didn't know how they could pay him to use our equipment, if he was covered under our insurance. Then it became, okay, maybe we could go into a volunteer. Now we're here, because I don't know, is if they are not going to pay him, we can't pay him, we don't have it in our budget. But then they were going to use that $5,000, but that wasn't what that was for, but they were going to use that. But I think that that's when we got to the part where if they contract, they have to use their own equipment.
I'm getting, Mr. Chairman.
A headache.
So are we.
So, I mean, I think this all should be back, back on the Mallow. I mean, our, our obligation that we have set was, for quite a while, is the manager. And the only reason that we, our obligation of the manager is due to LGLP determining that they had to, as a rec board, you know, for reasons they'll have to explain. I mean, but, so, put this all back, if you can afford a part-time, have, have at it. If, if you can't, then you can't. There was certain parameters for that $5,000, so, so that somebody could have a vacation and they could double it. And, you know, I, I don't know. I think that's up to them.
At this point, it, it seems like, I'm glad we got the, the paperwork for the volunteer position, because that kind of creates another option for the Mallow Board, if they choose to set it up as a volunteer and go this route, or choose however they're going to create another position for, we have two options, pretty much.
I mean, there's really good information in that document.
One thing, I, I think we need to make sure to get all this information to the Mallow
Board. It's, it's their decision, but, I mean, I feel we, we can help them, give them the information so they can make a good decision on it. You know, and with whatever Michael finds out from the LGLP on that side of it, too, you know, share that with them, so they can make a good decision.
Well, I emailed them. I hope that they would be here and made copies for them.
The, part of the problem, I think, is you've got that weird dynamic of, you've got a county employee who's oversight, it's taken care of by a board. So I think that board is struggling with direction on where they can and cannot make decisions on some of the levels of those county employees, I think is probably part of what the problem may be.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
And I think we need to reinforce that, that their decisions are their decisions.
Fair enough.
And that when it comes...
I'd 100% agree with that.
And then when it comes to whatever happens with county employees, so whatever raises we have in policies, we go back and tell them, this is because of, they can either go stricter, they can go, they can't go looser, but, you know, I think we just set those parameters. This is why we're doing this.
Yeah, I, I, that's kind of where my heart is on it, too. This is your baby, and I, unfortunately, I think they're, they're just a little confused of the whole aspect of the ins and outs of, of an employee that's, and they have to come to us to hire, and to fire, and that, you know, it's just a weird position.
And I, Mr. Chairman, I understand that, because it is weird, and, and we didn't always want that, but, so I think it would be who has to write some type of a letter stating, "We're behind you. This is what our obligation is, and we believe in your board."
We commit to X amount of dollars for you to yet fund the...
Right.
The operation, manpower of the operation, and proceed ahead however you feel necessary.
The decisions are yours. And as, and as long as we have the liability covered, and we obviously do, because we obviously was, we were allowed to have, they were allowed to have a contract for whatever employee for somebody to have a vacation. That was covered.
So, which brings me, this is slightly off-topic, but I'm going to stick with it. We've got a different animal going on at Fairgrounds, and an employee, a Fairground Board that wants their own employee, we've given up, we're in, at some juncture, we've committed to giving them their employee, he's operating county equipment. What do we do in that situation?
I think what, and this will have to be, to Michael to research, but I think probably what you have going there, because you have a recreation versus a statutory, well, it's not fixed that you have to have a fair board, you don't now have to have a fair board. But there are statutes for you, guideline, and so I think you fall back within those. You have a fiduciary board that takes care under the guidelines of statutes, where the rec board is a totally different beast.
So this, and I understand that aspect of it, but does that then, there was conversation with the fair board of taking away potentially certain things, I mean, maybe even health insurance, stuff like that. Is that not applicable now? That I'm trying to understand, the guidelines of these employees that we have working, it may be statutorily designated over there, but they're still a county employee, even though they want them to be their employee?
Sorry, I'll leave this back on Michael. But, but, sorry, Michael, you're sitting over there.
Yeah.
So the interesting thing that I would say to that is, cut ties. If, if you want the fair board to, to pay for the insurance and the, all that, then Mallow does.
Or, so our county equipment would then land under their umbrella?
It does with Mallow, too. Mallow doesn't own the equipment.
Yeah.
Mallow is not owned by the Mallow.
I think it would probably be some money will spent if you could get some research done on that, Michael. Personally, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks.
Just ask another county, how can you pay your employees?
I don't know.
Even though they're fair, Fairgrounds employees, are they still treated as county employees?
They are, because that's...
With all the county benefits?
Yeah, because they're not a separate entity under that statute.
They should be.
Under that statute, they're not a separate entity. They're underneath.
They're still part of, all under the Fairgrounds, even though the commissioners, even though they're under the fair board.
Yeah.
That board's still all under the commission.
So should we be handling the payroll for him?
We are.
Still, well, I know, but eyes of June, we made it.
Well, that's, that's what you guys said.
Well, that's what they were asking.
So I, it is my opinion that if you, if that's what it says, then you still go with what you have. And this board gets to pay, then.
Well, that's what time it was, when you have citizen people that don't necessarily deal with, and like that. So, yeah, if Michael, sorry, Derek, one second. Could you create, I mean, if it's okay with the board, would we like a motion for him to create a resolution to, or not a resolution, just a letter to send to Mallow Board with that guidance that we spoke of, and then maybe Michael can find out on the other aspects of these other issues?
Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, yeah, I want to know if you guys want me to engage an employment attorney or get anything like that. Particularly, I mean, because that's, won't be spending any, won't be spending money upfront, but you'll get reimbursed, but it's probably a good idea for me to, because that's really specialized stuff.
Derek, I understand that.
I was just looking at some of the language in which they were communicating. I look at it as kind of a, a means of keeping the lines of communication open also, maybe with the, the Mallow Board and the commissioners, even though it's probably a decision that they ultimately need to make as a board, they just want to bump along. So as long as, you know, that's also mentioned in the letter, and we're showing our support in an area that they decide.
Yeah, I feel they're crying the same boat as we are, maybe.
Maybe, maybe we need to, with them, if I'm doing anything, and I kind of feel like that's maybe what they were attempting to do in Upton. Well, I should know, maybe we can pick it up from there and solidify something for them or with them.
Yeah, in the meantime, maybe Michael could pleasure the board, but, let Michael reach out to, that outfit. Would entertain a motion to...
You want to do it next meeting, or maybe the first meeting?
Oh, yeah.
That way, Michael has more time to research it.
So a motion to, to do the, for Michael to proceed, and then we wait until potentially a month or so, and now to invite the Mallow Board in and...
Mr. Chairman, please have the letter out stating this is important.
Yeah.
So they're, they have an understanding, and then I think, no more on there, but, Mr. Chairman, I would, I would move to have our county attorney pen a letter to the Mallow Board stating this, this board's support. I'll leave the wording to him, but with the understanding that we are on.
I'll second that. Properly moved to the second for a letter of support to Mallow Board. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Okay. Yes, sir.
You know, maybe have Becky coordinate them for their meetings, so we don't put the cart in front of the horse, let them, let them get together with it, and then back to schedule Becky.
Thank you.
So the meeting's all following.
I should have asked for discussion, my fault.
Oh, we got it worked out.
Yeah. Let's invite, if it's okay with the board, to invite also the fair board for, if we're going to have a discussion with the Mallow Board of what Michael's findings are, I think we better get in front of the fair board, too.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's a great idea. I think it's a great idea to have a discussion.
Yeah.
And, and make it long enough that they feel that they had their voices heard, and want their reputation, you know, and ours, too, but give it enough time that we feel that they can do it. And we can, too. Of whatever it is that's...
We, we need a motion for Michael to proceed with the funds?
Yeah.
Would entertain a motion for Michael. Yeah, you did.
You did?
Yeah. Mike's listening. Would entertain a motion to authorize Michael to move forward with the $300 expenditure to LGLP to help get to the bottom of some of these employment issues.
Second.
Properly moved to second, and is there any further discussion?
Just give me a heads up. What, what exactly is that? I mean, I read it, but give me a more, inside.
It's a pilot program. I guess they started the, the LGLP board started this.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
It's a pilot program. I guess they started the, the LGLP board started this, advice of council. They don't want to specifically, for some reason, give employment advice, but they will give us a list of specialized law. Attorneys that do employment law as their specialty, quote unquote, and then they'll pay up to a $300 consult to talk with an hour for, or whatever with this attorney, just so, because they, they recognize that most county attorneys are not specialized in employment law, so they can, we can go and talk to these guys that are. And then we talk to these guys, we get answers, they reimburse that 300 bucks, and they can bring this back for this specific issue.
I'm sorry. So perhaps that we could have those discussions, so that we can form questions in order to get to that attorney. I mean, we might as well have, if we're paying the 300 bucks, have all of our questions and not just have him give us some overview that would pay 300 bucks. We should have questions.
Yeah, and I think we've laid out a few of them right now. I mean, as far as, we've got a different animal with this fair board deal. Our volunteer versus whatever volunteer contractor slash deal, is that an option for Mallow potentially? Chairman, everything? There's something else, anybody?
Well, we might claim something. You gonna think?
Then make sure you get your $300 out.
Thanks, Charlie.
Well, you get it back.
Yeah, yeah.
But you only get it once a year, so...
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
We need a definition of what's colored blue, so it's good.
Any further discussion or additions to what we maybe should look for? There's a motion on the table. All of the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Okay. Killed that cat 17 times. That kind of covered your deal, right? Or no?
No.
Okay, sorry. Move on, Michael.
It's not a new position. It's still an old position. We've had, you guys gave my department a funding for full-time Brooks job, and then there's some extra money in there for another part-time position that a previous employee had, who's not there. We filled in some of the money in the last fiscal year with somebody who came in and did some scanning and some housekeeping stuff, maybe around the office. We have that, it's not a new position, it's just an old position that we're looking to have somebody do some more housekeeping stuff, cleaning up some more files, scanning some more files, on a limited basis within the budget that you guys already gave us. I don't, I was just going to hire the physician, I talked to Becky about it, I brought the person up, and she said there's some issue with taxes and...
Well, it was really confusing, because you came in, you said you were replacing one person, this person was going to do one thing, you told Amber, then you said you were going to do her as a contract person, you were going to do it not in your budget. It was just really confusing. And then you were going to hire her to replace Tori, which was not in the budget, we had no money for that. Then they called and said you were replacing Kim, who was something different, so we were really confused, because there wasn't money budgeted for that, so I just said there was so much confusion, plus there was a hiring freeze on, and so...
So here's my question. You got money in the budget, in your budget, for whatever it is you're trying to do?
Yes.
So where are we?
I would assume he has the authority to move ahead, I guess, right?
He's got the money in his budget.
That's the money in the budget. There's no issues with taxes and unemployment.
Well, it wasn't budgeted for all that, but we just have to make use for all that.
It's just a, a part-time fill-in?
Part-time fill-in. Won't go above the budget. I would assume that the taxes would be already taken into consideration with that line, that salary anyways.
I mean, that's the idea. I'm good.
Another question I had, I'm good just to move along with that. I know it's a little out of order, I don't know if anybody's comfortable going ahead with this now, but I do have to be in court at one. The only, the issue is the, the, if anybody's not comfortable moving forward with it right now, since the, I didn't think about asking to amend the agenda earlier. Amend the agenda earlier, but it is the 115. Much adjustment to prepay for the expert on. Homicide case that we. Hired our experts for. Their services are now done with. That's what that is. They were. Instrumental in getting us a favorable result in that case. And if you look through their bill, they. They've charged us a lot, but they could have. So, but it's pricey.
Yeah, the bill's $22,771, so we're going to have to do a budget adjustment. For at least $25,000. And then you guys will have to do a prepay for this. Because it was not, we didn't get the budget adjustment done before. You guys have to approve that. So we'll do the budget adjustment right away and then ratify that resolution at the next meeting and then. We can do the budget adjustment right away and then do this prepay.
So. Can we open this up for discussion like when we do the, is there an issue of doing that when we? Have this consent agenda stuff?
Just, I'd, I'd like to open it for discussion probably.
I mean, I, we can do it now. It's up to the board.
Well, it's, it's, I, with apologies, but.
Do you need it right now? Michael, can we do it?
Probably like it today, but.
Yeah, the only issue is that I have to be here.
So you're, you would be inclined to want to, if there's any questions or whatever?
Yeah.
Okay. It's a $22,000 bill. For expert testimony to collision forensic solutions.
Michael, were you anticipating anybody coming in at 115 on this topic?
Well, I wasn't.
Okay.
I was just talking with Becky on it. When you guys authorized that. Jeez, it was about a year ago now, wasn't it? We.
Authorized what?
I don't recall at all.
Well, we knew that this was coming up.
Yeah.
You may inform us that this was coming up. There's going to be an expense involved with it.
Yeah, yeah.
Just keep it a heads up.
And I asked, are you good with me proceeding and getting an expert here? So go ahead. Wanted to make a budget adjustment. I ballparked low.
So my curiosity is, just out of curiosity. Why don't you use DCI?
We did use DCI. These guys, we had one expert from DCI. These guys had even more expertise in. Forensics and federal scans and recreating a scene. These guys. Had additional expertise and knowledge as far as. Accident reconstruction, which is one thing we needed to. Rebut another expert on the other side and then we had a crime scene. Expert that. Added to the expert that we had in the scene.
I do now, it says that, I do recall. I do recall you. It was going to be expensive.
During the budget.
Yeah, we didn't have any idea where this was going to go. It was for that.
Okay, so you didn't particularly put any money in the budget.
No, we didn't have a dollar amount, no.
No. We knew we'd have to do a budget adjustment and we said it would be once the bill came, or possibly will be another one. Maybe. During the next trial.
Yeah.
My, it's, my, because I'm a budget person. We need to find a way in the budget, even if that's a good. To come up with estimates of things like this. And I know it's hard to do. But this is a shock.
In fairness to Michael, I believe he came up with a number that he thought it would be. I mean, roughly, I can't remember what it was, but. It's probably double what it was.
No, it was a lot.
Triple.
Where did I say? I don't, I thought I said thirty. And I, I'm sorry if I made you misunderstand. It wasn't an actual budget adjustment then. I just. Came in and said, this is going to happen. I need to do this.
A heads up, yes.
Oh, then let me, I mean. I'll, I'll go back onto a budget type discussion, but if you guys already said to him, we're cool, then we need to pay.
So how are we paying for it? So. I entertain a motion to. Pay collision forensics $22,771.5 cents. For their testimony involving. The case that they. Help Michael or their county attorney's office with.
Just give a line at him.
Zero six zero zero two nine zero 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 hundreds.
You said six.
Yeah, zero six dot zero zero two nine.
I think that's the.
That's the trial preparer.
Trial.
Trial, yeah.
Yeah, so the budget adjustment's minus.
What's in there now?
Less than, it's minus five.
Yeah, we're going to have to do the budget.
Minus five dollars.
That's five dollars. Okay. So.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
In order to get that paid. Wow. I'm not sure the. I mean, the budget adjustment should have been before I get all that. But in order to get that paid, can we take it out of the middle?
Becky's thinking the general thought.
I see, well, so. I'm considering. I haven't looked at this very good, but. We usually have a. A balance account that that could come out. The financial admin has enough. Mr. Chair, I would, I would move your motion with that.
I have the motion on the table. Do you afford the 22s? You want to afford 25? I'm going to report.
How much?
The bill's for 22, so we can just pay that bill all about account.
And then if you.
Then we wouldn't even have to do a budget.
No, you wouldn't have to either. But my idea is, what is your second one?
Second one? It's so hard to ballpark these. How, would it be better if I came back at the next meeting and had a better idea as far as the price for that? We could just. Have a good idea for what we're just ahead of time? That'd be preferable?
It'd be preferable.
Okay.
I mean, I don't, I don't think it's an issue right now for us to pay because I think they're owed.
Yeah, and the conversation happened that this was going to happen, so.
So I, I mean, I don't, but I think with your second one. Get a general idea and the, the back end, the place that it belongs.
Sure.
So that you have a general idea of what was spent for that year? I guess probably.
And this is unusual near. Obviously.
To make your motion, is it okay to set $23,000 as the amount?
Whenever we cost it.
Oh, that's right. We're knowing that.
Just pay the bill.
Paying it out of.
I'll second that motion.
I second it. Any further discussion? None, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. All right.
Thank you.
Darren for lunch. Background one. Business. Like he added bid bond when required to. This list that we had.
Oh. Your checklist.
Yeah.
Okay, I had a couple of questions on that too, Mr. Chairman. Let me go to number four. Number four. Okay. The question that I had was, would it be appropriate to put a change order? A statement of change orders on here?
Would that be?
An amount limited to.
That wouldn't be covered under that methodology for changes, would it?
It may be, but, but maybe it is, but I think it needs to be explained somehow.
I agree with that and I think that you guys have to approve change orders before they do them.
Yes.
Because that is something that has been a problem with bids. You guys get the bill on the change orders. You guys don't even see the change orders on bids and that is a problem. That we've ran into with these projects. You guys get the bills of the change orders and you guys don't even see it. You guys might appoint someone to be in charge of this project and that person approves them. They could be half of the cost of the project and that person might say, okay, that is something that I feel is okay. But you guys as a board might say, that is something that we don't need, but you guys are stuck paying it because that person signed off on it already.
Well, that's why I think we should.
Sure.
I'm sorry.
Well, to add to that is, uh, this is dealing with. We're dealing with contractors that maybe understand the way in which the county does business. What they could purposely do is they could undershoot the bid in order to get it and then they mechanically install those prices without approval. So if a person definitely wants something right there, we deal with it in the collision industry. On, on appropriate bids, how complete is it? And the, the methodology for the changes, definitely we need pre-approval. Otherwise, there's, there's strategic matters taken into place there. Providing the, the bid.
And I also think it should be a percentage limited to. So, I mean. I think you, I think change head orders happen. I think you come across something and, you know, this is going to happen, but. If you limit it to a 10%, and I know, and we did as a, as, I think you were on the board. We had a contractor, we awarded a contract. And when he came in, he told us. You know, I make my money with the change orders and we fired him. We fired him. You know, because he was pretty upfront about it. He undercut and they will. So I think we should have a, a percentage limit. Then if it comes back, you know. Unforeseen. Circumstances, it's going to be this much. Then you have that comment to allow it this time, because things do happen.
So. We add change order as another item there and then approval. Maybe needed or, or. All change orders need prior approval.
Yes.
They do it, they know that they're not guaranteed to get paid for it, yeah.
What, what is methodology for changes?
It's just a really fancy word.
Maybe supplemental changes could be.
I'm not sure. I just took it off of the.
Whatever that one. I, I'd say it's, you're going to explain why you're doing changes. Methodology changes to me was like, this is why we're changing it.
Okay.
They're going to explain why, why they need to make a change.
After, after initial bidding process or something?
So change order prior approval by board accounting commissioners.
And.
Cannot exceed 10%.
Correct, settle on it. Unless approved by, in a board or something. I can see where you had a certain. We had a Mallow job, million dollar project where a 10% might be. Less of one dollar.
I think something else. Like to add?
Um, just to clarify that, are we going to, wanting to insert a 10% more or less buffer? Is that right?
For sure, just leave that out.
I think we should.
But change orders just have to be approved, period. And when you guys, that, that amount. Regardless, you guys have to, because the 10% could be, it could be a huge amount.
Mr. Chairman. The only reason I say that is sometimes it's. I don't approve, I don't approve of change orders particularly, but there is, there are times that something happens quickly. That they need to make a, you know, they know that this is going to happen. If you just play a project for two weeks. Because you had to get a different light bulb. You know, I, I know I'm making a very simple light of this.
That makes sense.
But there are those occasions where I put in my bid that we're going to get this kind of chair. Those chairs are no longer made because we waited too long. It's going to be a five dollar more. Can I get, just get the chair? You know, and then maybe that's for example too, but because if you're building something, you need to complete the. The project and you may not have two weeks.
On the, as far as the buffer, I think, I think it would be appropriate, appropriate just to have approval for all. That way, that way. We're covered on our end of it. Because ultimately they're going to be requesting a payment from us and. Otherwise you might have to put on kind of like a, an oversight and say, okay, are we, are we noticing that all of these bids are magically coming in 10% over? You see what I'm saying? And, and send them to final. So I think, I think supplemental or overage of change should just be pre-approved with explanation. Keep that clean. They'll understand the complications it could create. Maybe they'll take that into consideration when they present the bid.
Really? Want to add on to that, Garrett? Is there some type of wording we could put in there that allows for? Minimal or, or. Changes that are basically the same, but they're different. So like your paint that you were talking about. So instead of buying, so you put in your bid that it's this, this bid paint, but I can't get 25 gallons of it. Can I get the dollar and a half more because that's what I can get in order to get in the bid? See what I'm saying?
Well, playing what you can do on the homework on the front side once the bid is presented, they should know what they, they could be able to do that job for. At that moment, if something came up after the bid was presented, then they would be coming to us with the overage of using a different type of whatever.
So would your question fall under general and supplemental condition?
Yes.
When we go to work on that part, that small change might fall under that condition.
I just think you have to allow for.
Be a little bit.
A little bit because you put a bid out. It takes you two weeks, you know, you go, you allow for all the bids to come in. Then you have another two weeks or, you know. The way the world changes.
Because I think each of these that we have done, we're going to have a little memo on what.
I agree. So that, that small change could fall under that general and supplemental condition.
So I have a thought on that, on that elevator, but. Mr. Taylor called me and said, I don't know what to do. It's $60,000. I said, fix it. I don't care what it costs. It's got to be fixed. So. Could there be a situation where we could say, give the chairman leverage within like 1% of whatever. Say it's an emergency thing. It's going to cost two weeks of delay. Could you give authority, prior authority? Could you give authority, prior authority of a, a small dollar amount, you know, to, to solve the issue?
I would get more comfortable with that.
Where it's not, I mean, granted that elevator was a weird animal because of the cost, but it's another $50 to get this type of chair, and I can't wait to do it. I don't know.
Well, I think when, Mr. Chairman. When, when you're building a bid, I mean, you're gonna have something, all that stuff in there, right? And I think part of what this is, is how, not only a checklist, but it's a basis of how you're gonna build a bid. And so I think you could put in something that the project manager within X, Y, and maybe that's a percentage there. Could make those executive decisions.
If it's, yeah, if it's 1%.
Right, 1%, you know, or.
$3,000 or less, or 2,500 or less, and it's either it doesn't get done for two weeks or a month now because it's been delayed.
It's something that would expedite the project.
And it could even follow a chain. I mean, it could be, try the chair, you don't get an answer there, vice chair, whatever.
The idea is that you find contractors on it and do that to them, just in case.
What kind of leeway leverage do you guys could mark?
Yeah, so that's what I'm thinking about from this whole conversation. He's got, you know, a certain amount of leeway. I don't think we have a set dollar amount necessarily, but you know, he's our guy on the ground to communicate with contractors and, you know, that, speaking of, when he speaks on behalf of the town, they largely, you know, listen to what he says and what we prefer and things like that. But if a change order comes in, that always comes before us. He never makes a decision about a change order without counsel.
But you put your full faith in him as a, as a planner to.
He's paid a salary to do that job.
Do the best you can, your ability to save the town money and get the problem fixed.
Exactly, yeah. So I mean, you hire people you trust to do your job for you. But change orders and things like that always come from a full counsel.
Yeah.
Well, it might be something that we could ask Brandon. Usually he's involved in most projects that are going on. And, you know, we give him a little leeway if it's less than $500 or whatever. We decided maybe we could talk to him about that, and he could have, use his common sense. And if it's something small, he can go ahead and give the okay. And if it's not, he would know better than probably anybody how, how urgent it is that it gets done right away, or, you know, all of those things also.
Yeah. I'll give that to. Just trying to create a threshold where it's not offensive or whatever.
Really, on that change order side, I think, right at this point, I think we're trying to think too much into it. You know, it's just change orders that they need to come from the board, and that's, it's gonna have to be held, done on a case-by-case deal.
I agree.
You know, just, but just for a checklist, we just need to have something that, you know, all change orders be board approval, you know.
Maybe minor changes, reach out to the chair or the, or the project, or, I'm sorry, Brandon, and figure out if it's $100 to go down or whatever.
I think you're gonna have to go, we're kinda gonna have to go back to even, I mean, what the basis of this issue is. Is why don't we have a list of what's gonna happen? I mean, you know, the elevator needs fixed so that it gets put on the schedule of how we do it. The parking lot needs to be fixed, so we're gonna put that on the schedule. And so this all gets done prior to this emergency. And it feels like it's a react, this is reactionary. And I know we don't wanna be reactionary, I know we wanna be proactive. So I think somewhere along the line, we need to have some type of discussion that we have whoever's going to do it, Brandon or whoever, comes up with that project list that we get to that point.
We've been working on that the last couple of years, and where this kinda culminated from was the paint on Kupla. Everybody's looking at each other going, who painted it? I don't know. Who was the last person up there, what did they use? And so we were kinda at a standstill, like there's probably no warranty, you know, there's no, did they use the right paint? You know, so I think that's, it is reactionary because of that situation and trying to, but we do, we have been working on that list, and we're slowly, in a way, on the way to some of it.
Well, I, Mr. Chairman. I think that we tried, when the Kupla was being done, there wasn't, I mean, we had a member on this board that we just had lunch with, but that did kinda ask those questions and put that in that, you know, and whether or not we followed through, that's a different story. But, you know, it was comfortable enough thinking that, that like paint and stuff. But I'm, I'm curious if, if maintenance person is the person that you're going to put in that position.
I think that'll go back to case by case, you know. If it's, if the big project that's going on at the fairground, that's gonna be the manager out there's job, or if it's up with road and bridge, you know, it's, we're gonna have to kinda fly by the seat of a panther. I mean, this, this list is something that we have, we can get on there and say, okay, you didn't tell us what kind of paint we were using.
Okay, so put on this list who the project manager is.
You can go.
It's all the cock drop.
There's more. Pretty sure.
Okay.
You can pilfer through there.
Okay, don't scare.
There's no hard boiled egg.
Go hard boiled egg. Think you got it, are you over?
So so if we designate a project manager, say it's Brandon on a project here at the courthouse, and it's a mild fix that maybe Brandon isn't comfortable with, is that somewhere where we feel comfortable saying, you reach out to the chair if it's something that is urgent? And, I mean, sort of board, I mean, I was completely comfortable with Dom getting that elevator fixed because it was so urgent that it needed to be done. So granted, most, I can't, those instances I think would be very rare, but, yeah, but.
And maybe at, at some point, we can have a little form that says, that we give the contractor that says, your project manager is this person, this is his phone number. And at that point, we'll know the amount that's been bid for the project. And then maybe at that point, we can say, any changes under $500 must be approved by the project manager. And anything over must be approved by the commission. You know, we can just have a little form that we give them.
That'd be pretty easy.
And, and they can sign it, and so we've got something to track it.
And we'll get the handle on it case by case.
Yeah.
Well, it also could be part of your award documentation.
Yeah.
And that project manager, I mean, you give this to a pile of these, Brandon, and a pile of the fairgrounds manager, and say, you are the project manager typically on this situation. If the board gives them leeway to do that.
Mr. Chairman, I also think that there also needs to be another level there that Brandon or whoever comes in and says, here we are, this is where we're at. And any questions that we have, we can, we can have that discussion, but we're not being left in the dark. And you're not getting that question of, how come this? So, I mean, it's just a regular maintenance, uh, report, update.
Well, that could be.
Five minutes.
One thing you could do with that is if you were to report to somebody, one of us commissioners, and you could fire an email out to everybody that says, it's just for informational purposes only, not a discussion. X just happened on Y project, and Brandon is proceeding forward with it. And then, so it's, I don't think you would have a lot of those situations. It's just keep people informed, and then when he comes in or whoever comes in for their little deal, they could further inform the board or whatever. At least the board might go to kinda keep a running total of what's going on in their mind.
You know, that, I'm sorry, that question of, where are we at on this, could be answered.
Okay. Feel, everybody feeling semi-okay with this, maybe get it finalized.
Until the next time.
Yeah. Till we have our next problem. Okay. Till we have our next problem. Dispatch check to the city of Newcastle.
So they cashed it, $9,000. That was written on January 19th, 2023. They cashed it on December 19th, 2024.
That's, um, we can.
They did. Because Michael, the board, sent them a letter because Suzie was asking about it. Michael sent them a letter, and it was the two payments for dispatch from 2023. They cashed it.
I thought they could because, you know, that conversation happened in here that there's nothing on these checks saying that they have a 60-day expiration.
My question now is, it was in.
A different fiscal year.
Well, two fiscal years ago.
All right.
184106, cancellation of warrants and certificates, General. The county treasurer shall on the first Monday of December in each year cancel all unpaid county warrants which have been issued for more than 12 months. He, which is not appropriate here, shall at the same time cancel all county certificates of indebtedness, as a matter issued by the board of everybody else. Not been paid within one year after he's been given legal notice that there was money in the county treasury to pay them, the county treasurer shall certify to the board of county commissioners, or to the county, the other entities, the board of county commissioners, and the county hospital, library, welfare, or whatever. Any person holding a canceled county warrant, so this one wasn't canceled, or certificate of indebtedness may present a warrant or certificate to the board of county commissioners within five years.
So it's been lost in two years. So see, she was wanting to send this to an anticipated unclaimed property.
But she, it should have been canceled. I mean, if you have not cashed that check in 12 months, the law says you will cancel. If you therefore are holding a canceled warrant, then that canceled warrant can be brought back before the board of county commissioners in order.
Within five years.
Within five years.
I know, I don't know why she just didn't cancel it.
Yeah.
That had to mess up the books, didn't it?
We've been carrying that for a while. But I mean, I don't know where she pulled it to cover it because it wasn't in our budget. We didn't budget for it.
That money was being to the warrant account back two years ago. That money's been sitting in for that check two years ago. See, because she takes the money out and she puts it in that account. So I, I mean, I can see where that, that was held for that. I mean, I see where that, that progression went, but my understanding is why it wasn't canceled. Do you have other, do you have other?
You want me to bring her in here?
So I guess lesson learned, I mean.
We don't have to come up with that $9,000, it was already sitting back there.
It was sitting already.
It was sitting there aside, so we don't have to come up with it, but.
But like Marty said, any check that's in there should, is to be canceled after a year. So it should have just been canceled. We don't go to them and say, please cancel this.
And then they would've gotta cash that check, and it's no good. Then they can come back within five years and already apply for it.
Same, I even went to Michael, because he had to get involved, and he didn't catch it either.
But we're going to now, starting this month, all checks are gonna say, Lloyd after 60 days.
I'm not sure you can do that, but I think you can after 12. So I think you can say on a check that it says Lloyd after one year from issuance.
Well, if that states statute, we shouldn't have to put that on there. It should just automatically have been done.
We shouldn't have to do that.
The problem is, is probably Suzie has never dealt with it before, so.
Well, I think she has, does she have more that she?
No, she just didn't.
No?
No, that was the oldest check we've been rolling.
Look like mud on our face, I guess, for not, I mean, I guess you need all the statues better.
Well, you know, it's kind of a hobby.
I wanna think that maybe Michael would look at something like that too, as part of town, but.
I, I just, I mean, when I saw that, I thought, I think we talked about that. Yeah, I mean, this is watering the bridge. The money's gone, the check is cashed. So I think what's done is done. We're stepping forward, and we'll do something different in the, in the future.
I don't feel like we're spending money anyways that we.
That wasn't already.
Yeah, we, we incurred that bill, so it's not.
It's just an, it's just.
Yeah, for malady.
Well, and it's also a bookkeeping nightmare.
Good to know in the future.
It's a bookkeeping nightmare.
Yeah.
Thank you. I will tell you, Mr. Chairman, this was a point of experience. When my family died, I didn't get around to sending vouchers to the city. I just, I had a lot on my plate, and so I finally did them in like November, after they died, they died April, March, and April, and then I finally got, submitted several in about November, and I was denied payment from the city because they were a year, and they would have to open up the budget to pay me. And so I took it as a loss, and it was a lesson learned. But that's probably how I, you know, I was more focused on it because it was my own fault. I'm not, couldn't blame anybody but me, but I didn't have any idea I couldn't get paid if I didn't fit within a some program.
Yeah, you're gonna learn in life. Anything else on that?
When we were talking about the function of the cashing of the check, was, are we, were we taking the language of them cashing, cashing the check for the $9,000 in agreeance to what we had owed them because they were demanding more?
So there were, we were paying them $4,500 per month, and they did not wanna accept the $4,500 per month. They wanted a huge amount. By them cashing that check for the two payments of the $4,500, they would have been accepting our original contract.
That's how that was.
There is no contract or anything.
We were still following that original contract.
So the cashing of the check was in agreeance to that?
I mean, I guess, but now.
I mean, that's what I was, I'm guessing too.
Yes, so now they agreed to that, but now there is no contract because we have formed a joint power court, so.
That's an interesting.
It's kind of a wash. I mean, they got the money even though there's no dispatching agreement between the county and the city. That was the reason they were holding it, because they didn't want to accept the $4,500 per month, they wanted them.
But they also rendered dispatch services for those two months.
They did.
I mean, it was owed.
We didn't owe them for something.
I mean, it was owed, we owed them. Right.
We paid them what we had owed them in agreeance to them, aside from what they were asking us to pay them.
Exactly.
Because there's only contract they have with someone.
Yeah. Anything else on dispatch check? Okay, moving on to new business.
Did that one?
Comment.
Let's go back to our...
Right.
I just wanted to follow up on that survey. Did you guys have a chance to look it over? I mean, you didn't, I didn't have your email, so I just printed one.
Were you listening?
So I wonder if I've responded to it.
You did, said it looked good. But do you want me to forward those to the department heads or where we have that?
This is cool.
I think, yeah, let everybody look at it quick, but they didn't get a chance to.
My computer's not working, so...
This is cool.
I will, I will fill it out when the chair is working on it.
I can bring you a copy, too.
Okay, that'll be great.
I just wanna hang on to it and...
Are you two?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, may I ask?
Yes.
Tell me, what are we doing? What is it?
Oh, so I've been trying to work with you guys. I'm getting a county master plan together, kind of your to-do list checklist. And so we thought, maybe do I a survey for each department to sort of see what their needs are, what sort of things, what projects, you know, kind of get in the to-do list together, honestly.
So what's your feedback through all the department?
I haven't ordered that to any department. I was wanting to hear guys' approval before I sent it out.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I moved it, she's, these two are department.
They moved. Second, second. I was the favorite, please say hi.
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 Yes, sorry. And those not favorite, please say hi. Any discussion on that anyways?
Good job, thank you. It was awesome, it was awesome.
That was great.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Cam, it's awesome.
Thanks, Cam.
It was cool.
And I did call Don, he said he was gonna give you a copy of the airport one, so...
That's right.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't know if you got that.
If I haven't, I will.
Okay.
You want me to get that to you?
If you could, he said he was gonna give it to you. I have to get it to you.
Well, you can get it to you.
I know, that's what I thought.
I'll dog with Don.
Okay.
Thanks, Cam.
Yeah.
I think we're okay. Marty, do you want to come and share that one?
Thank you for the wonderful discussion today. I apologize for refusing for half, one quarter of my month. Thank you, Walter. Thank you for those people that took the time to help me out in the hall. The most wonderful thing about our community is that we are Canadian. And so it was, it was the greatest thing, and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Marty. Eric?
I don't have anything today.
Edward?
Yeah, I got a good one. Yesterday, WCCA had a conference call of the board of directors. There is, a long discussion was held in the next session we can't discuss about. But in the short of it, there's a possible lawsuit out there. The LGLP was asking for WCCA support. They're gonna ask for WHAM support on filing an amicus brief. There's a possibility of being challenged to the Department of Constitution because it's said out there that towns and cities and districts, we all are under a 200, the cap that LGLP pays is $250,000. There might be a challenge if that's unconstitutional. And the reason they were asking for WCCA then, WHAM's input, there was a bill that was going to be released that was gonna raise that cap to $1 million, which LGLP looked into that. That would be a 72% increase in dues back to everybody. That is all the way down to your district boards. Everybody uses LGLP. So that, in the meantime, that bill's got changed to $500,000. They don't know if it's been released yet or not. So the board unanimously agreed to support LGLP in the filing amicus brief. It will cost WCCA or the counties nothing because the LGLP lawyers are gonna do all the work on it. So that's just, that's it. The reasons come about, there's supposed to be, there's a case where somebody that used the LGLP injured someone, one of their entities injured someone, and their $1 million doctor bill, and they're like, "Thank you, fifty of them." Far as we can do it on that, but that's, in a nutshell, we're there with that. Legally, the, the bill review committee convenes next, for two weeks on Wednesday, two weeks from tomorrow, on doing bill review for Wednesday session.
I was personally intrigued today with Roger Connet's update. It seems like there are some things I don't know if maybe he is unallowed to speak about or whatever. Very intrigued with the unknown. But I'm anxious to hear future updates from him. And also, security thing, if we've got something as valuable as what is being claimed, a security thing is definitely an issue.
Thank you for brought this up to me. And I'm gonna read this to everybody just to try to get a grip of this, but... "Upon declaration by the governor of this state and at the discretion of the Weston County Commissioners, any date appointed or declared by the President of the United States an occasion of national mourning, rejoicing, or observance of a national emergency is considered a holiday." So we're basically to be closed. Well, I read that as, "Upon declaration by the governor of this state and at the discretion of the Weston County Commissioners, any date appointed." So if Mr. Biden declares the National Day of Mourning for tomorrow for Mr. Carter, wouldn't it be, if it's "and at the discretion of the Weston County Commissioners," doesn't that mean we also have to agree that that is considered a national day of mourning amongst, well, that we are going to observe that as holiday days, basically? Or am I...
It says "at the discretion of..."
Yep, "at the discretion of the Weston County Commissioners." So, and the reason she brought it up, people were asked, so people have been asking, if the court house is gonna be closed whatever day he declares that. But my assumption is, we've never decided to do that. So I think we're business as usual. Okay. And maybe we need to visit about that sometime, that might add in the future. I don't know.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if at some point somebody wants to take it as a day of leave, I mean, that's personally their idea. I mean, that's the problem. It gets to them.
It was in the handbook, it's like now, because he had to put it in National Day of Mourning, and it's in the handbook, so...
But if it says "at the discretion..."
That'd be a hard thing to do because you're not gonna get a, especially on a deal like this, you're not gonna get a lot of preemptive notice that there's gonna be a National Day of Mourning for, or to have the discretionary ability to say, "Everything's closed at X date." So...
When do you declare that?
Either yesterday.
So every other governmental department is considering the same thing now? Well...
We just need to take it out, then.
Yeah.
I mean, not that it's gonna take place a lot.
I mean, if it's even, if it's in there, it's at our discretion.
It says at our discretion.
If we'll, it's our discretion, so...
Because there may come a, there may come an actual day of mourning that we do want people to have their... So I think you have to leave that in there because of that reason.
I think I'd also agree, I think there could be an emergency or something interesting that happens.
Yeah.
You know, we couldn't need that shock.
That would be a shock.
A hundred-year-old man dying, that's a...
So, so I understand that. When you originally asked to have this step move, you have, you want it after the options?
Well, I was going to before the options, I was all psyched up. Now I gotta redo my psych.
Thank you, commissioners.
Yes. We need to psych them out.